None of us have had an opportunity to do that, or to understand what the advantages and disadvantages to that are. I think it's a lot to ask of this board to make such a change without an opportunity to have more discussion and an opportunity to do some research in the background.
Yeah, it's, um, I do, I am intrigued by the idea of possibly the superintendent before, so that gives the board members an opportunity to maybe also comment on something. Obviously, the superintendent probably knows more about what's going on in the district than we do. It's normally a positive type of thing. I know in the past, the superintendent spoke in front of things that I hadn't thought of, and I wish I had an opportunity to then comment afterwards. So, you know, it's been this way, the way it currently is, since I've been on the board eight years. I'm certainly not against any type of change or anything like that. I mean, maybe, you know, we all of a sudden have a new board, and things don't always have to stay the same way they are. I'm also kind of intrigued to look at other boards and even watch some other board, maybe just to see, maybe that works a little better. I don't know. This is the only way I know that's been. But maybe, you know, if 26 or 28 other districts are doing it sooner, maybe there's a reason. And again, I don't know. It might seem very petty. I don't know, but it's, I'm certainly not, you know, opposed to it. It's something new, and I'd try.
Could we see a level of maybe postponed for two weeks and discuss it without it? We never did that back up. I would really like an opportunity to understand, you know, why the other districts are below. Maybe we would postpone for four weeks to discuss it and ask them to look at the stuff that did more with the other. Unfortunately, it was here.
I'll say this. I do like the idea of the board having an opportunity to make its report after the superintendent's report. What order that goes in. My main concern would be that the board does have an opportunity to speak last, if you can represent the community. I think one of the issues that was being raised is that, I believe it does say permanent in the actual motion that Ms. Vargan has brought forth, and some board members feel not comfortable with that. That note, would you, Ms. Vargan, be interested in possibly entertaining the motion without permanent in it, and let's see how it goes for a week? And then if we feel inclined to continue that at the next board meeting, then we can solidify it as a permanent, as a permanent order for the agenda.
Sure. If we do it today, and then that will give the rest of the board members time to look at other agendas and maybe talk to other board members and other districts and see how and why it's a, it's a, it's a practice, or why it's a practice to have the board end the board meeting. Yes, definitely, we can do that, and then make it where it's an agenda item next meeting.
And Mr. Pigott wants to make comment.
Yeah, and the one thing I think somebody did mention, and I think it is important, one of the things that I have always wanted is the opportunity to speak after the public speaks. You know, for seven years, I always had that problem where we tell people they can come to the board, come to a meeting, and they come to the podium and they speak, and we just don't do anything. And we did switch that last year, which I'm happy about. The same, I guess, with the superintendent. I think maybe that might be an important thing, though, as well, too, that if somebody does come to the podium to speak on a non-action item, I guess if we do do it before, we have that high, it doesn't give the superintendent an opportunity to comment, maybe on something to, you know, answer or, you know, give some type of information that he or she might know that we don't know. So, I guess I'm just inclined to even be open to where even if the superintendent wanted to say something toward the end, or a board member wanted to say something toward the end, don't make it so formal. Make it to where if someone needs to give a comment to something, that's open to do as well.
All right. Board member, Hall, or board member Sutherland?
Yes. I'm a little concerned that we are making change for the sake of change, because I have not heard a reason for having the superintendent speak before all of these action items and other agenda items. This has worked very well for us for 10 years, recognizing that you've done some research. With all due respect, the person that brought this motion forward has missed all but one meeting this semester, with the exception of this meeting. So I don't know how we're taking a recommendation. This isn't working well, and we need to make a change without understanding why you want to move the superintendent way up in the agenda without an opportunity to reply or to respond to items that have occurred throughout the meeting and the agenda. So I really don't understand the purpose other than change for the sake of change, or to try to look at something like other districts that we've looked at. We should do it because it's the right thing to do and because it makes sense for this board and for this district.
I'll just add that I think board member Pigott did give some reasoning with regard to it, and he stated that there had been things that have been mentioned by the superintendent in his report that he would like to elaborate on or make comment on. I do feel the same way. There have been times where I read the superintendent's report, and in that report, there is something that I felt that I would like to comment on. So I think that is the reasoning behind it.
Well, we could do that, though.
Well, Ms. Vargan, let me finish. Ms. Vargan has presented some information, and I know she had brought this issue up before several times. Most recently, we had a special meeting earlier this week on Monday evening, and she did raise it at the special meeting, which would have been three days ago, three days ago. So the reasoning behind it is that there sometimes is a need for the board or board members to elaborate on something that is mentioned by the superintendent in his report, and I believe that's why she believes that it would be a good change. What I had asked is that Ms. Vargan take the word "permanent" out of it. We've done this in the past, to see how it works, and if it seems to work well, we'll just move it and see if we can continue it on. It's still hoping that we could do that. But you would have to make a remotion, taking out the word "permanent." But let me go ahead and go with Mr. Board member Patricia down here at the end.
You mentioned that she's presented. I have not the information. I have no presentation. She has the documentation. That's all. What I'm asking for is put it off two weeks. Any changes, give us all the information. So we have, for us to make a decision, you've been very big in this, John Paulson. How can I make a decision without the information? I am lacking any information about this subject whatsoever. I have none. You're asking to make a vote, yay or nay, without any information is irresponsible.
Like, I know, we have discussed getting the board of education report after the superintendent's report, and I believe we did try that as well. I don't recall ever talking, ever hearing about having the superintendent speak well before, I think you were talking about having it before the information items, well in advance of the actual work of this board during this meeting, where there would be an opportunity to follow up. So I am not aware of a conversation where we've ever talked about having it so early on that superintendent doesn't have an opportunity to respond to anything because of the board.
If you watch other board meetings and watch the tapes of them, and if you watch ours, if Dr. Wonderlick feels the need to respond to anything that Mr. Holbrook says or any change that anyone else says, he is free to do so. That is part of the discussion, so he can join in and end the discussion. But this is about his formal presentation and having it follow the guidelines and the protocol of all the other districts around us. We're the anomaly, and it's, it's, I believe, it gives the impression that it just, I think, ending with the board making this report is why it should be a support.
I think one of the issues that I would raise is that in the past, when I've had issue with a agenda item that came before this board and voting on it, it had to do with something that was permanent. Then if you're aware of, that I was not happy about the superintendent evaluation and expedited timeline that occurred, that was a permanent thing. I would not have an opportunity to revisit that after that vote had happened. This instance is different. I've asked Ms. Vargan if she would take the word "permanent" out of her motion, and if she does, in fact, do that, this would be something that would be good later changed on line, if it does seem to work out or be orderly for this board. Any other board members?
So, I'm just, I'm not understanding the motion then. Are we changing it from here on forward unless we choose not to? Or what is, what is it? Is it just for tonight?
I would say, well, I would like to make a motion to move the superintendent's report and the agenda to be placed starting today before the information items. So on today's agenda, it will be after number seven, before number eight, and if it remains, it will be the item before the information items.
Is there support?
Well, I guess my only thing is, and it is information, usually that's information we're getting, but I do, I guess I would want to give superintendent the opportunity to address a community member if they came to the podium. And if we do that, there's not another response and for audience comments. I guess that's my one concern, that the superintendent doesn't have that opportunity to address, because like I said again, if somebody comes up to report to the board, a lot of times it's about something that we don't know about, and the superintendent might know about it. So, you know, the superintendent's better to answer the question. You know, I, again, I just want to see if somebody comes to that podium, they've come to the board, that they can get something back, if they followed the chain of command, and they're finally at this level, they come to the podium, they get some type of response or answer for something.
When I've watched other board meetings in other districts, all of them have public superintendent boards, so none of them have the, where the superintendent does go after the public sometimes, and sometimes they don't. It depends on the, depends on the district. But I think I've also seen, like, in a board presentation, a board member stopping in there or asking in the presentation for more information from the superintendent to elaborate. So it's not as if he's got to have a muzzle on and he can't actually talk at his meeting.
So then I have to ask, is there support for Ms. Vargan's motion that she put forward?
I guess I'm not clear. Did we change the motion, or what was that?
Ms. Vargan did change the motion. She read the motion with the exception of taking out of the word "permanent." So I think what Mr. Pigott is stating, Ms. Vargan, though, is that he would be inclined to see a board of education reports flipped with the superintendent's report. So superintendent's report first, then the board of education reports. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I just think it's, I think it's important, and like Ms. Vargan said, certainly it wouldn't mean that there's not an opportunity, but I think it's important that superintendent does have an opportunity. Again, I'm looking at it for the sake of if somebody comes to that podium to speak, they have somebody who can give them an answer or reply. And a lot of times, it's the superintendent, and he's done that a lot in his reports. So I guess I'd kind of be inclined, if we could do that, kind of flip them, and then the superintendent does have the opportunity to respond to the public.
Mr. Patricia.
And again, Bob and I, we've talked to over the last few years about that subject. We have people that have come to the podium and have not told the truth. And we are going to react to someone saying something that isn't true, so we're going to react to a lie. Makes us look foolish. If we don't react when people come to the podium, we get back with them at the following meeting is been our practice, personally. We direct them to the people that they need to talk to. To open us up, to set us up for someone coming in here would be very easy. I mean, say, my child is, you know, whatever is happening to them, and we find out that maybe they might not tell us the truth. I've had that happen. The superintendent is our spokesperson for our district. He is the head of this district. He is the face of the district. He has knowledge of what's happening every day. Again, if you want to add that some hard comments after his closing comments, because you don't like what he said, you want to correct him or something, or debate or argue with him on that, that I'm open for in a couple of weeks. But again, I have no information about changing anything in front of, to ask me to vote on something that I have no information on, one way or the other, is not fair. And again, it was for the board or against it, I have never voted for something that had been put on the agenda without it either being an emergency or having a cast presentation, an informational item. It is not fair to this board. It's not me personally, it's this board. We're supposed to represent people. When I don't have information, how do I do that? Thank you.
I think if, look, it's about compromise, right? So my suggestion would be, okay, we look at it. They, we have a meeting in two weeks. They have everyone the opportunity, but it's back on the agenda in two weeks, and then at that point, we will, everybody will have a chance then, and there'll be no excuses that nobody didn't have time to review it, look at other boards, think about it, and just put it on the agenda in two weeks. And at that point, the board will openly vote and make the decision. And I know that's kind of messing with your motion. I apologize, it's just, I think it's a compromise.
Ms. Vargan?
I mean, I'm willing to compromise. I'm not hearing compromise on the other side. I'm hearing, you know, no, we stay how we are. However, so how about tonight? We move, I will change my motion whenever we call, and move Dr. Wonderlick's presentation after number 14, so after the audience comments, but before the board comments.
Is there support?
Again, I don't know if Dr. Wonderlick has been appraised of this. He has prepared a closing statement. This is what we've done. You know prior to any, at least to me, whether you did it the rest of the board members, I don't know. I have nothing to throw it out on the night of a meeting without having information. I don't understand the concept. Again, you want to change it, you want to have last word, I understand that, but to do it during the same meeting is irresponsible. Again, put it off for two weeks, then go run it. I'm sure it will pass, but at least I'll have information, and I know what I'm voting about. To say, well, we'll just move our little bit tonight, no one has been prepared for that. We have a meeting, we have everything set up, so there are no surprises. We try to do surprises, it makes us all look foolish. I feel foolish. I just, I don't feel it's fair for the rest of this board to surprise them.
Any other comments?
I just want to point out to whoever that about 20 minutes ago, I said, can we just leave this for a week so I have a chance to look at it? So I don't think everybody is saying that what I think we're saying. It's just going to be a little more time to look at it. So I don't, I don't view that as not being willing to go with it or just giving out a flat. No, I just want a little bit more information to understand why and to give everybody an opportunity to look at it and say, no, I just would like to understand why and have a feeling that you understand why. It's now, it's 6:30, I don't know.
Any other comments before I take a vote on this issue? It has been presented and seconded.
What is the motion before?
Do you completely agree with the motion for us? The, Ms. Vargan?
Am I, it's the one?
Yeah.
Where, okay, where we will move the superintendent's report on the agenda tonight after the audience comments, so between number 14 and number 15.
And that was just a clarification. It has been presented and it has been seconded, so we will take a vote on that, that motion. And this is only for this meeting, right?
For tonight, and then we can do it on the, yeah, before the vote, and I'll send a copy of PDFs of making them, of the PDFs of districts around us.
Albows in favor? Albows against? Motion passes? Board brief? Any other agenda motions, motions to the agenda? We will move on to the oath of offices for newly elected, the two newly elected board members. We now welcome the Honorable Judge Kuhn of the 51st District Court to administrate the oath of office to the newly elected members Julie Jocelyn and Joan Sutherland.
Julie and Joan, if you could step down. We may go out on a limb here, folks, and say that this item is not going to agenda the kind of controversy that this has caused.
We must discuss it, if you will.
I am Southus Square.
I am Southus Square.
I support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
The United States.
The United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of the opposite.
Duties of the opposite.
Member of the Education.
Member of the Board of Education. Of the Waterford, Michigan, School District. For the word to the best. Thanks.
We will now move on to the celebration of learning. Ms. Stone?
Good evening. While we're catering drama club and the International Best Group Society Trip 2,244, proud to present Noises Off. Called the funniest farce ever written, it presents a maniac menagerie, excuse me, of innerance factors where you're seeing a flop called Nothing On. Doors slamming on an offstage intrigue and errant inhering all figure in the plot of this hilarious and classically comic play. The world-renowned show will have the audience laughing at every moment with its fast-paced action and often incomprehensible series of events happening simultaneously. This isn't one you want to miss. The show runs Thursday, January 31st, through that Saturday, February 2nd at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, February 3rd at 2:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased at the door or in advance by visiting waterfordpac.com. Now, I'd like to introduce the Best Group and Director Jason Breck.
And God said, hold it, and they held it. And God saw, and it was terrible.
Sorry, love, this door won't open.
Sorry, love, the door will close.
And God said, Poppy! And there was Poppy! And God said, be fruitful and multiply, and fetch Tim to fix these doors.
Oh, I love technicals.
She just loves technicals. I mean, isn't she just, I mean, honestly, she just loves technicals.
Everyone's always so nice to everyone.
Isn't she just, Belinda's being all, you know.
It's such a lovely company to work with. It's such a happy company.
Which we've got to stock the Maltese in 12 weeks' time. Are you all right, Lloyd, my precious?
I'm starting to know what God felt like when he was sitting out there in the darkness creating the world.
What did he feel like, Lloyd, my love?
Very pleased he'd taken his manner.
He only had six days. Of course, we only have six hours.
And God said, where was Tim? And there was Tim! And God said, let there be doors that open when they open and close when they close. Doors. Doors. Are you fully awake, Tim?
Yes, because they have a set up again.
Without trying to do too much on you, Tim.
Uh, Tim, this door won't close.
And the bedroom won't, you know.
Oh, right. He hasn't been to bed in 48 hours, Lloyd.
Don't worry, Tim, only another 24 hours, and it'll be the end of the day.
Oh, he's calm down earth amongst us.
Listen, since we've stopped already, okay? It took two days to put up the set, so we shouldn't have time for a dress rehearsal. Don't worry. Think of the first night as the dress rehearsal. If we can just get through the play once tonight for doors and sardines, that's what it's all about. Doors and sardines, getting on, getting off, getting the sardines on, getting the sardines off. That's first, that's theater, that's life.
Oh, Lloyd, you're so deep.
So just keep going. Bang, 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 Tim! Bang, you're on, bang, you're safe, bang, you're off. And everything will be perfectly, where is Seltzer?
Oh, no!
Not already!
Seltzer!
Seltzer, Poppy!
I thought he wasn't back with you.
I thought he wasn't back with you! Is Mr. Malbrae in his dressing room?
I'm sure he would, if not a technical.
Would who?
Seltzer, we can't find him.
Of course he would, if not a technical.
Have a chance, he would.
Would what?
No, be fair, my sweet.
We don't know.
Let's not jump to any conclusions.
Guys, go as gold, all their rehearsals.
Just get on your stubby dress, Tim! Finish with the doors, get the burglar gear on.
Right.
He shouldn't have been let out of sight. I think he must never be out of sight.
Yes, but in the rehearsal room, it's all, you know.
There was no sex. You could see everywhere.
Yes, and in here, it's all.
Split into two. There's a front and a back, and instantly, we've lost him.
He's not a dress rehearsal. We checked in the laboratory, and the scenery dark and the proper with the paint score.
Bring the police! I'm sorry, Johnny, my love.
It's my fault, Lloyd, my love.
I cast him.
Let's give him one last chance, I said. One last chance. I mean, what can you do? We wear weekly wrap-togethers in peebles.
It's my fault, Johnny, my precious. I shouldn't have let you. This tour for her is more than just, you know, this is her life savings. We know that, Gary Love.
It was a try to make my fortune. I was just trying to get a little something by. I know, love.
Just something that she could buy a house for, to, you know. That's not so much to ask.
Don't cry, love, it's not your fault.
No, I've got something in my lens.
Yes, you couldn't expect Brooke to keep an eye on anybody.
But he was standing right there in front of the stalls before we started. I saw him.
What are we talking about now?
Don't worry, dear, we know you can't see anything.
You mean Seltzer? I'm not blind, I can see Seltzer.
Seltzer!
Oh, my God, he's here all the time.
Standing there like Hammond's father.
My dear Seltzer, you gave us all a scare. We thought you were not there. Where have you been, Seltzer? You all right, Seltzer?
Speak to us! Is it a party?
Well, thank you for that, just fantastic. I mean, it's like our own Broadway, watching you guys right here in water. Just, I think that it really makes the community feel like you're right here in your own backyard. You can go out and see some really awesome plays and productions. So is there any comments that you'd like to make?
Uh, no, I, uh, this show, this is the second time
Uh, no, I, uh, this, uh, this show, this is, uh, the second time I've done this show, uh, since I've been in Michigan. Uh, it's probably, uh, one of the funniest shows that I've ever had the privilege of working on, but it's also one of the most difficult and demanding on the actors, um, that I've ever privileged of working on. And these kids have worked their tails off, and it's really showing up in front of an audience, and, uh, it's gonna be a great show.
Boy, remember Petrusia.
I like your show a lot better than ours.
Um, first of all, that was very cool. Great job. Uh, I was, when I was in high school, I was in preschools every year. I loved them. But my question is, you guys seem so, like, natural when you're doing it, and just, you didn't have to think about lines. When did you guys first start getting, like, script and your lines? How long have you taken to, I, you know, I mean, I would be cue cards from somebody off to the side, giving my lines, and you guys would just boom, boom, boom?
I'll, I'll play this one too. The, this time slot of the year is rushed for us. Uh, we, uh, after the holiday collage season and all holiday concerts came along, uh, on holiday break, um, we have auditions right before we leave for holiday break. Uh, and when we come, we, we have diversity over, uh, over the break given a couple days, uh, over the break. And they, we went through, and they all were moving and everything in about a week. And then the week after that, they were expected to be ghosters in their hands, what we call off hold. Uh, so they've really only been working on the show for a couple weeks now. Uh, and, uh, the script, uh, you can see it, basically, the script is like this, like, it's like a hundred and eighty, it's a hundred and sixty, it's a hundred and fifty long. So, uh, they've been, like I said, they've been working really, really hard. It's a very intense show. Uh, the act, Act Two of the show, uh, I told them when they auditioned that they would lose probably fifty pounds because it's, it's pretty much just, uh, a half hour of that running room with crazy people. Uh, there's so much going on, and they don't talk. It's all movements. So, like I said, they've been working really, really hard, very short.
So, I'm sorry, but, so how much time did, like, one of you put into, when you, when do you get the script in? I'm, I'm just kinda freaked out about how well you guys did that, and it hasn't been a long time. So, how many hours do you guys put in to try to memorize those lines and, I don't know, if one of you can answer, or how often do you guys, every night, just sit at home and read your part, basically? Yeah? Very impressive. Ms. Sutherland.
Uh, Mr. Pratt, thank you so much for all that you do for the program. And, uh, my daughter was actually in this play, um, when it was first done in Kettering. And it was, I'm not kidding you, it is hysterical, and there's so much physical comedy in it, and that second scene is, for me, by far, the most epic play I've ever seen, ever, ever, ever. And, um, you kids were fantastic. I know what's in store, and I, I encourage the entire listening community to take some time out of your schedule, to make sure that you know the timing, get your tickets, because everyone needs to be able to laugh. Laughing is so good for the soul, and I promise you, this play will make you laugh out loud. Funny, hysterical, for, for, for the entire duration of the play. It's brilliant. Very nice job. Very nice job.
Ms. Salford.
Uh, congratulations. Awesome. Can't wait to see it. Um, I see that you have a proud principal here, super here. Do you have proud parents here with you as well that are gonna be supporting you? They get a proud of you too for getting over there and supporting their, supporting their passions, so.
The parents could please stand. So I think the parents are a big part of it and supporting your, your children in doing these kinds of things. Uh, this is education. This is, um, part of the whole educational process. You're memorizing lines. You're putting yourself out there, uh, you're following your passions, uh, learning new talents. I mean, these are the kinds of things that you're gonna utilize as an adult as well. So, I think, um, you know, participating in this is just as important to your educational growth and knowledge and, um, and your education in the board and your education in the community, I believe. So, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. So, we're gonna move on down the agenda. You're welcome to leave or you're welcome to stay and get life. We're just gonna be doing some organizational, uh, voting and, uh, other agenda items. So, um, our next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, organizational items. Uh, election of officers and board appointments. So, um, we will open it up to, uh, election of board president. Are there any nominations for board president? Uh, Ms. Halls has been nominated for board president of Waterford, uh, School Board. Any other nominations, Ms. Bargan?
I mean, Bob Pickett.
Mr. Pickett has also been nominated for board president of the Waterford Board of Education. Any other nominations? That being said, I will close the nominations, and I will call the vote. All those in favor of, uh, the nomination of Ms. Heather Halls as board president, um, signify by raising your hand. There are three votes for Ms. Halls. All those in favor of Mr. Pickett for president of the Waterford Board of Education, uh, please raise your hand. There are four votes. Mr. Pickett, uh, has just been nominated the president of the Waterford Board of Education. I will hand the gavel over to him, and I will give him the, uh, package.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Not to figure out where you were at. Well, look at you. Alright. We are going to continue with the election of officers. Uh, we are up to the office of vice president. Are there any nominations for the office of vice president for the county? Mr. Petrusia.
Joan Sutherland.
Any nomination for Joan Sutherland? Are there any other nominations? I would like to make a nomination for John Paul Torres. Are there any other nominations? Alright, that will go to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of Joan Sutherland as vice president. And all those in favor of John Paul Torres as vice president. With that, Mr. Torres will be vice president for county. We will next move on to secretary. Uh, are there nominations for the office of secretary? Mr. Petrusia.
Heather Halls.
Any nomination for Heather Halls? Are there any other nominations for the office of secretary? All of that, I don't even know if we have to have a vote, but all those in favor of Heather Halls for secretary? And Ms. Halls will be our secretary for the year. And next, we'll move to the office of treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer, Mr. Torres?
Like the nominee, Ms. Bargan?
The nomination for Mary Bargan for treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Ms. Halls?
Uh, to nominate Robert Petrusia.
So, uh, Petrusia? Alright, Petrusia declines. Mr. Petrusia.
Look, nominate, uh, Joan Sutherland.
Alright, any other nominations? All of that, all those in favor of Joan Sutherland as treasurer? And all those in favor of Mary Bargan as treasurer? And Mary Bargan will be the treasurer for two thousand and eighteen. Alright, next, we will move to board appointments. Um, most know that members of the, uh, school board serve on various other boards throughout Waterford and Oakland County. Uh, we have a representative and we have an alternate. Uh, we'll start with Oakland Schools. Uh, the current representative is a member Sutherland. The alternate is a member Halls. Um, Ms. Sutherland, would you like to continue with that role?
I would like to, unless there's anyone else that has an interest that would like to participate in that.
Does anybody else who has an interest? Alright, Ms. Sutherland will continue, and Ms. Halls, will you continue as the alternate?
Sure.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, next, we'll move to Oakland County School Board Association Legislative Forum. Currently, the representative is a member Torres. The alternate is a member Sutherland. Uh, Mr. Torres, would you like to continue, or is there anybody else who has any interest in taking that position?
I would like to continue, uh, but I would also add that all board members are welcome to come to the legislative forums or legislative committees. Uh, they will accept, uh, up to three members of any school district. Uh, but I would like to be the district representative and continue that capacity.
Alright, anybody else interested? Alright, it looks like, uh, Ms. Sutherland, would you continue as the alternate?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Alright, next, we have the Waterford Township Recreation Board. Currently, the representative is a member Petrusia. Uh, member Pickett is the alternate. Mr. Petrusia, would you like to continue on that board?
Yes, please.
Alright, is there anybody else who has any interest? Wonderful, and I'm currently the alternate. I'll stay that way unless anybody else would like to take that role? Alright, those will stay as is. Uh, next, we have the Hess Hathaway Advisory Board. Uh, representative in two thousand and eighteen was a member of the SPA. The alternate was a member of Petrusia. Um, who need to fill the representative role. Is there somebody who would like to take that on for Hess Hathaway Advisory Board?
I'd be interested in it if nobody else wants it.
Is there anybody else who'd be interested? Alright, Mr. Torres will take that on, and Mr. Petrusia, would you like to remain the alternate?
Sure.
Alright. Uh, next, we'll move to Waterford Youth Assistance. Uh, currently, the representative is a member Pickett. The alternate is a member Torres. Um, again, I have no problem staying on unless I know, uh, Ms. Joslin, you've been involved in youth assistance before. If you'd be interested in, in taking, um, that role, or it's up to you. Would you?
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright, so Ms. Joslin will be the new representative for Waterford Youth Assistance, and Mr. Torres, would you like to continue as the alternate?
I will.
It, it doesn't matter to me either way.
Uh, I will serve as the alternate.
Alright, perfect. That is is. Uh, next, the Head Start Policy Committee. Uh, representative is a member Petrusia. The alternate is a member Bargan. Uh, Mr. Petrusia, would you remain as the Head Start Policy Committee member, or anybody else interested? Now, we're speaking to you. Perfect, and Ms. Bargan, you can remain the alternate?
Sure.
And last name is Grayton Plains Nature Center. Our representative is a member Bargan. The alternate is a member Halls. Um, are you okay with continuing, or is there anybody else that would like to take that role? Yeah, I'm gonna stay on this alternate. Okay. Alright, thank you, everybody, for serving. I know it's more time out of, uh, your already busy schedule. Um, and I think it's important that, um, at each meeting, school board members also give a report about the, the district and what's going on, try to keep everyone involved. So, um, thank you all for continuing that spot. Uh, next, we'll move on to information items. Uh, Mr. Holbrook, this is about a bid package, Cooley Elementary remodel, in addition to Pearson Middle School remodel.
Yes, uh, just on the bid for the Cooley Elementary remodel, uh, since we were at, uh, Beaumont at the last meeting for action. And, uh, Cooley is, uh, an excellent process. That is, uh, the next bid, uh, since I'm, uh, permission, I think, I've. And here's, uh, this is just, uh, door replacements in the, uh, locker room area. Uh, we need some, uh, proof for the safety, so we're rushing, uh, that type of door. So, we're just following up with, uh, remodel, uh, a while back.
Uh, are there any questions from the store?
Um, Stuck, if you could go through the process again of exactly how we determine which school gets a remodel and which does not. Um, so, uh, Beaumont was up at the last meeting, uh, for the, uh, Cooley here. Then Grayson, who's been some renderings that have been released, uh, so how, how do we come to a determination on what schools?
Originally, we went, uh, the, um, since two thousand and sixteen, I don't know, uh, also, uh, we identified, uh, projects and needs and, uh, and, uh, through the process, we laid out a plan, uh, put it in the application to state, and we followed in our, uh, plan that we presented this for, um, since two thousand and sixteen.
Now, is there any revisit of those plans, um, or any need to amend those plans in any way based upon shifts in population, uh, student enrollment or anything to that extent?
Uh, yeah, we're always looking at that. I mean, and then there's other things to consider, uh, uh, improving projects and new project forward. So, all of this is a sub form of, uh, now used to make improvements, uh, which you'll see coming up soon. Also, is the Mont Kettering locker rooms, uh, maybe moving forward, and Kettering is also being, uh, just because of the addition of Boiler. Uh, we don't believe, uh, we're, uh, that Boiler might end up in Boiler, uh, to begin with, in two thousand and twenty, uh, so, uh, renovations. And so, as needs do come up, we do alter the schedule to what makes sense, uh, back up, uh, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars into a order system, for example. We're just gonna rest it anyway, so like, it's in two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and twenty.
Just, just another elaboration on, on the process. So, when we set out in the bond, uh, and it's been some time since this has passed, um, as to the schools and, and, you know, what the projects are, um, what kind of, just, feedback is given or information is given so that we determine what school is gonna get it going? I mean, I, I would say it's Beaumont first, then, um, you know, uh, Cooley, then Grayson. Why not, you know, uh, you know, Hopings, I think we, we did, um, but, uh, why not Havlin, why not Gruyere Side?
Well, Havlin was done, Hope was, uh, in Dotson, uh, Dotson being the building that was in the worst condition we had, and, uh, the money that we had to shell out to, uh, the building, uh, in good condition for students to be there, so we started off in that one first. Uh, and over the years, we met with our, um, with our meeting group and determined, uh, we have both assessors, for example. We've been able to make this group determine what, what is going first. There is a really order for, uh, you know, you're doing Beaumont, we're doing Beaumont, Cooley, uh, Grayson all at the same time, so there is an order here. There's an order for, uh, this bid act due to, uh, let's see, the designs, and so it may take a little longer. Uh, Cooley's a little bit more healthy at site, so that takes a little bit longer to, uh, to do. Uh, and, uh, Grayson has extensive muscle, uh, needs to be renovated, and we have a better track and flow compared, so when it comes to the planning phases, uh, it might take more time with her than, uh, Grayson's, I mean, uh, for, uh, for Beaumont, we've all, uh, uh, for renovations this summer. And originally, uh, we've got projects, uh, we met with, uh, all the buildings, uh, for schools, and, and, you know, we did evening meetings with PTA, the Order of the Optimist, uh, even the union, uh, just for reference, uh, January seventh, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and February sixteenth, with all sorts of unions, all sorts of, uh, groups setting playing out plans, uh, of what we're going to, uh, renovate. So, uh, keep in mind, other things we've considered, past projects, uh, we've made substantial, uh, we've had substantial projects at, uh, high schools. We remember that answers to the original elementary college in, uh, two thousand and three, uh, they had a tremendous amount of renovations there with, and, and additions. Uh, so the elementarys were back up on back to mature renovations. But all along, you have to remind, all along, we made better projects, uh, like, say, like, Kettering, for example. In the last two, two years, it's had some over seven hundred thousand dollar remodel projects, you know, uh, covered all the five hundred, really, being redone, um, the section in front of the office, along the, uh, the old gym, uh, the cafeteria back toward Beaumont to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, football field. And then, you know, I blocked, uh, the AC from, to the, or nineteen sixty, I don't wanna say sixty-five or sixty-eight, somewhere, you know. Obviously, it was failing west of, you know, uh, the, uh, some of the projects, uh, just, uh, just to, 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 uh, fixing them, uh, just to replace them, you know, makes sense.
And then, if you refresh my memory, so the remainder of our elementary schools, are they gonna be also?
As is planned right now, yes.
And when, when is that?
Uh, we're in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Holbrook? Alright, with that, we'll move on. Uh, next, we have audience comments on action items. Uh, there's one person right there, but it's not action. Alright, we have a, um, audience member would like to speak on, I should have a leave on, uh, social media, Sally Hart. Uh, I'm looking at, I know there's a specific thing to read. Uh, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Uh, derogatory about, uh, an individual, uh, please address the board.
Okay. Uh, I was going to speak at the last meeting. Uh, this is about that policy that you passed, how my granddaughter had a concert, and I would have lost my grandmother license if I had not gone to her concert. So, I was very disappointed by the acceptance of the new policy, but the board implemented already included. included. After the discussion of the board meeting of November fifteenth, when the policy was first introduced, I kind of got the feeling that the board would have a committee of a whole meeting and iron out their differences before the next full board meeting. That did not happen, so we ended up with a discussion of the dueling definitions of inflammatory. Ms. Underland offered a definition from a legal source and Mr. Torres used Webster Dictionary. Not surprisingly, these two definitions were different. This leaves an open point for an employee who has been disciplined under this policy to contest it. What they will ask is inflammatory language. They may enter their own definition and challenge any definition the board puts forth. The word itself is subjective. It is open to interpretation and this can lead to a lawsuit over the interpretation. Both of the members stated that they were trying to protect the district from a lawsuit. I feel that leaving this word in may have opened the district to a possible lawsuit rather than giving a definitive guideline to follow. No one checked with the twenty-six lawyers of Neola to ask if another word had been considered or if they anticipated problems with interpretation of the word "inflammatory." Mr. Torres did ask what protection or legal help Neola would provide, and I took the answer to basically be that Neola would hold up the paper and say, "This was the policy that we wrote and we provided for you and I, you go hire a lawyer and argue any issues that arise." Uh, right now, we have newly elected member Julie Jocelyn on the board. I am hoping a new phase with fresh perspective will bring a sense of cooperation and working together to the board. And I want to relay a, kind of along with this, I was watching C-SPAN one morning and it was a group of lawyers setting policy for sexual harassment in prosecutor's office and other offices where perhaps lockers may feel that they are being sexually harassed, taking comments from, actually across the country. And this one man came in and they argued over the definition of the word "shout," and they thought they might want to change it to the word "may." Now, if these are lawyers arguing over the definition of a simple word in policy, I feel that's what inflammatory has done. If you had included a definition or checked with the lawyers, I would have felt better about it. And I use the, it has nothing to do with social media, but my appropriate skirting may not be your appropriate skirting. The word "appropriate" means absolutely nothing, it's in the eyes of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that has any comments on action items? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Secretary Halls.
It is recommended that board approve the minutes of December twentieth, two thousand eighteen regular meeting and January fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen special meeting as approved.
Then a move to support, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Accounts payable, December twenty eighteen, Treasury Department.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the check electronic funds transfer register for the month of December two thousand eighteen is listed on pages one to one hundred and fifty, and the fifth third count statement listed on pages one through two. I support.
That's four. Then a motion support, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. School district financial statement, pressure, pardon.
Excuse me, sorry about that. Um, the board is in receipt of the statement of revenues and expenditures for the six, for the six months ending December two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Uh, new business, uh, Secretary Halls.
Superintendent's recommendations fifty-seven dash eighteen dash nineteen, retirements, resignations, leave of absence, expirations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignations and retirements presented as approved.
Support. Is that a move to support or are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Sutter.
There are several names on this list that, uh, make it just so hard, uh, I can't not include it, but, um, I recognize all of the names and, uh, I, there's one that really stands out this year in that story, Simmons, and, uh, she has been an integral part of our district, um, providing not just state recognition, but national recognition for the Waterford School District and the food service arena. She is a dynamo of energy and enthusiasm and she is integrity personified. She has brought the most amazing programs to our kids and, um, has, has really elevated Waterford to a place in the food service arena that, uh, very few districts ever had an opportunity to enjoy. Um, I've been at different conferences representing Waterford for the, um, Michigan Association School Boards, and the, the food service articles written about the Waterford School District food service, um, are what they share in some of these, um, different breakout sessions and even in a, a general presentation, we celebrated the work that's been done in Waterford. And, uh, the entire department is extraordinary, but to see her name on this list is a little tough because she is an amazing woman and we thank her for her extraordinary service to our district and, uh, for her contributions that will reach far into the future.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bargan.
I am very, very sad to see, um, Andy, Andrea Stevens on the list, um, to resign, um, and to resign mid-year. Um, so sad, I hired Andy, um, back, uh, back in the day, she was an excellent teacher, um, and I believe our district invested heavily in her with Galileo training and, um, she goes to be a team of students sincerely and is, um, just a very sad, sad thing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, all in favor? Motion passes seven zero.
Superintendent's recommendation fifty-eight dash eighteen dash nineteen, teaching contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as presented as approved.
Support. Is there a motion to support or are there any questions or comments? Um, I have just one. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no, go ahead.
Bottom of this is where I, I'm gonna pass, like, suggestion.
Okay. Just, the only thing I asked, um, it took me a while when I first got on the board, where a hundred percent to a hundred and eight point five percent or something, could you just do a quick, I don't know, double or, it just kind of what that is, just for anybody who might be listening, what is a hundred percent to a hundred and eight point five percent or?
It's taking one of the classes out of their day and paying them extra for that day. So eight point five is, uh, half of seventeen, one, one section is point seventeen of TD, so for half, or per day semester, it would be the point oh eight five. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Torres? Oh, no, oh, I think, is there a question?
I'm not sure of the time we're giving, we should maybe both close this and, uh, we should.
Well, I guess, time counts.
How many, how many is excited?
How many?
Okay, it's not about specific people, um.
Is it about this motion or this particular?
It's about reporting to us, to us, to us. So I think if we close it, then I can make a.
Or even do that during workouts?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
It, it just.
Have to do it, well, okay, okay.
Is it a statement or a motion?
Um, it was a motion to, uh, about changing.
So, so maybe it was stand alone.
Okay, so let's close this and.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero.
So, I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah. Can we save it now?
I have to, to, for.
Yes. Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendation fifty-nine dash eighteen dash nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, Board of Education meeting schedule. It is recommended that regular meetings of the Waterford Board of Education be scheduled for the list provided on the first and third Thursday of each month with exceptions. Board meetings will be held at six o'clock PM with the Waterford Council Call on the Korean, located at fifty-two hundred Civic Center Drive, Waterford, Michigan, unless posted otherwise. I support.
Support. Is that a move to support or are there any comments or questions? This is, so, Mr. Torres.
Um, I have a, a request, um, so I know our meetings generally are at six PM and this reflects that, um, but I, I would like to ask this board if we could, uh, entertain our meetings beginning at six thirty as opposed to six PM, so amending this motion, um, to make our board meetings at six thirty. Uh, my reasoning, uh, is that, as I can tell you, the last, uh, the two most populated board meetings that we had this past year were, began at six thirty. Um, one was a special meeting at Pierceville School, uh, that began, um, and another was the, uh, actual budget meeting that began at six thirty that we had at the administration building. I did receive several comments, I have received several comments from parents, uh, in this district that our meetings start just too early, um, that it is very difficult for them to actually get to the board meetings, uh, by six PM, and, uh, in many instances, it feels though they're not even gonna come because they're gonna be late. Uh, so, uh, many people in the community over the four years that I've been on this board have reached out to me about having our meetings later. Uh, I can tell you that, um, as a board member myself, I generally, uh, am, uh, taking vacation time from work, uh, which I will continue to do, uh, to leave early to make it to our board meetings by six PM. But I ask more on behalf of the community, uh, maybe we will get more people come to meetings for at six thirty, maybe we won't, but there has been this, uh, outpouring of, uh, requests over the four years that I've been on the board from the community that we do move our meetings back just a bit. Uh, I don't see any harm in, in moving it to six thirty rather than six PM. So I would make, uh, a motion to amend, um, this, uh, thirteen, item thirteen A, uh, pre-superintendent's recommendation fifty-nine eighteen nineteen, um, to reflect six thirty PM, uh, start time for board meetings as opposed to six PM.
I think, before you make the motion, um, I think there are other comments, uh, Sutter.
I just, I, I've been on the board for ten years and I've never had anybody ask me, "Could you please have it a little bit later?" I know you said there's been an outpouring of requests to you, um, my concern is that not normally in our meetings, almost everybody in the audience is an administrator or a teacher or a group that's presenting and they've worked all day and, so when you say there's no harm, what it does mean is that we're asking an additional delay for those members, they can't go home and see their families, that they can't, it, it is an additional length to their day in order to support the board meetings, and that is actually why when we moved it to six o'clock, why we did that, out of respect for the board, because it is a meeting of the board, but for the administrators who are here to support it on a why basis. Share that so that you understand the history of why that was like that.
Mr. Torres?
I mean, I understand the history of it, um, but I think it gets back to the idea of what do we, what is this board here to do? It's here to serve the community. Um, and I, I can tell you as a working parent, um, and I don't know if other board members feel the same way, uh, that I interact with quite a few working parents, we're taking our kids, we're, we're picking them up from preschool, we're, we're taking them off to dance, uh, we're getting them out to, uh, practices, and then we're shooting over to the next day, we're going from one thing to the next and the next. You know, my experience, I have a four-year-old daughter, um, you know, my wife and I, we work as a team, but not just on board meeting nights, any other nights, we're running around. And I appreciate the fact, um, that, uh, you know, our staff and our administrators are, are here, um, we as a board are required to be here, um, to give information to the public. These board meetings, in my opinion, are for the community, for the public, and I, I understand that, um, you would have administrators, you'd have staff, and I give, uh, a lot of respect to them for being here, but I, I would assume that they deflect their time, uh, you know, they're staying late, you know, we all do this at work, if, you, you, you come in a little later the next day, kind of thing, so there, there is that, but for me, the way I look at this, is principled in the fact that I think we need to be servicing and thinking of the community, uh, ahead of everything else because this is the board that is elected by the Waterford School District community.
Mr. Patrucha.
Again, it's, uh, the last minute type of dish, I, I don't know how many, uh, the information that we're gonna get from Mary about how other people run their meetings, there'll be some information, a bazillion there about their start times. To add something or to do something at the last minute without giving any information, any heads up whatsoever is irresponsible. Uh, to get the, our meetings started so we can get to an event possibly at the schools by starting earlier, by six o'clock, you may be able to hit to the play by seven some thirty, the ball games, the different things that are happening in the schools that we can be at. If you, the lady who started, we're not gonna be able to have principals here because they have events happening at their school at them seven, seven thirty times, and they have to get there early, so we're going to lose the participation of the administrations of the building because they will be tied up with that. If we get our, our business done, and again, I think I would ask you to look up the definition of the school board meetings. It is a public meeting, it is a school board meeting in the public, it is not a public meeting, it is not for the interaction per se. We welcome it because they are the public, they are our constituents, but it is a school board meeting in the public, it is for us to do our business. Thank you.
Any other, Mrs.? Mrs. Sutter.
I just want to say, obviously I would like the community to attend it, there's no part of me that's trying to make a change that, or, or deny a change that, if I thought that a half an hour difference, all of those activities that you mentioned, I understand that, believe me, I understand that, you're tasked to be more than one place at one time on any given day when you're a parent of more than one child, and you have to defy the laws of physics, but I don't think fundamentally that a half an hour shift one way or the other is gonna allow us to hit everybody's calendars because everybody's calendars are busy from the time kids get out of school until they tuck them into bed at night, so, um, I, I think we need to be looking at all the other factors in addition to that and not just that.
Mrs. Bargan.
Uh, just, since Mr. Patrucha brought it up, uh, Waterford's agenda, we start at six, uh, Clarkston starts at seven, um, Westfield Field starts at six thirty, Hern Valley starts at seven, and Wobleg starts at seven. Just information.
Mr. Torres?
Um, I, I would say that, you know, I do contest this, this, Dr. Patrucha with the respect, um, definition, um, but this meeting is open, uh, or is subject to the Open Meetings Act, right? So that indicates that we are, we have to notify people that we are having a meeting, the public, so that they can be here to see the transparency of the Waterford School District. So my request to move it to six thirty PM is an accommodation to many people in the community, many people in the public, so that we could better meet, uh, their, their schedules. Now, will it make that much more of a difference? I, I don't know, uh, but if you look, and I think this Bargan just cited a few other districts, that, uh, this, other districts do start later. Um, I have gotten different comments from many different people, but it, and it might just be the people who we interact, you know, I'm, I'm a young parent here in the district, um, I happen to have a four-year-old and a twenty-year-old, so, um, I'm my second go around this time, and I get a lot of feedback and I get a lot of information from other people with kids in elementary school, uh, kids in preschool, and many of whom, just like my wife and I, are running from, you know, this, uh, appointment to appointment, from dance, uh, practice to, you know, the, the next thing that we have going on, so I think the six thirty time period is more accommodating to the public. I, I completely respect the staff end of it, the administrative end of it, but these board meetings are for the public to come view and to see the transparency of the district, to see what we do with their money and the kind of issues that we take on, uh, on, on a, on a daily basis, and if, if it wasn't. And if, if it wasn't for the public, then we would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, which would be out. So I want to accommodate our community more. I appreciate the work of the staff, I appreciate the work of the administrators, but, you know, I serve the community. That's what I'm here to do as an elected board member. Thank you.
Mrs. Soffler.
I've been doing this for ten years. I did all that stuff. I juggled my kids in the bathroom where they were supposed to be, still managed to get here at six o'clock. I have never had a staff member or a community member ever complain about the time. And I would personally much rather get in here and get out so I could spend my time at a concert or a play or a game than sitting here arguing about what time we start or what's on our agenda and what comes where on the agenda. I think my time would be much better served going back into the community and serving instead of sitting here arguing about the most ridiculous thing. So I see no point in changing it till six o'clock. It's not respectful to our staff, who've also had a long day. We've all had a long day and I would much rather take my time and go back and put it back into the community instead of sitting here.
Um, you know, for my, myself and the stingy side of me, six thirty obviously would work better. I know that sounds bad. A lot of people think, oh, the side is that side. I swear to you, that's not the case. I'm always rushing from work. I have to get off work early every meeting, but it's something I chose to do as a board member. I didn't have to take this role and do it, so I, I did choose it. Um, I, I appreciate Mr. Patricia and his, we hear it a lot from him about last-minute type of things. And, and I appreciate that because I, I certainly understand his thoughts. Um, it is a, it's, it's a small change, but it's a significant change from six to six thirty. Again, I, I, it would work better for me, but I guess I am concerned about everybody up here at this, this table. Every board member, Superintendent Megan, our administration, our public, our, our staff. Can, can we table it until the next meeting and, you know, and, and see if we have any or we can take a vote and, and I guess we could, you know, change it back.
We'd have a, we'd have a motion up before, just like Soffler. Do you have a take or not?
All right, Mr. Torres.
So my comment would just be that, um, you know, I think that this does serve the community better. Uh, we see the other districts surround us are doing it later than us. Uh, so I think it, it would be helpful. Um, with all due respect, I, I don't think that this is a last-minute kind of thing. It's, it's more of a, something that you think about when you're reading through the packet. Now, we have these board meetings and then we take comment on these things so that we can discuss them and debate them in public. Uh, we don't have to show up at these board meetings and be completely on the same page. I think that's one of the beauties of our board that we have. Do we have longer board meetings? Sure we do. But I can tell you, I set my whole night aside every Thursday night for these board meetings because I made a commitment to the public when I ran for office that I would come to these board meetings and I would serve. I don't want to cut conversations short, uh, debates short, um, and rush an issue just based on the fact that, you know, I got something else to go to or something else to do. My Thursday nights are here. Um, the six thirty P M. time period, I have heard from the community. Um, I know what the board members say they haven't. I think many people in the community would appreciate that. I appreciate the efforts of our staff, but I am here as an elected board member to serve the Waterford School District community and to be their, their voice and will to be a trustee and act, uh, in their best interest on behalf of my experiences and the information that I get from the community. So I, I, I want to continue with this. I, I would say as a compromise, why don't we say that this is not for the entire year? How about we, you know, amend this to, for the, for the next few board meetings and see how the six thirty time period works? Because I, I can assure you that I think that there are a lot of people out there that would appreciate it, uh, a, a later time. And you have to think of it this way. I know our staff works all day when they come to the meetings. So the people in the community, they work all day, right? They get out of work at five o'clock, they rush home, make dinner, get it to their kids, spend a little time with their kids, and maybe try to get to a board meeting because there's an issue or there's an agenda that they're passionate about that they wanna speak about. Or maybe they wanted to put it on T V, they wanna put it on the Waterford channel. So I say, let's give them the opportunity to get home, make dinner, play with their kids for a few minutes, get them settled in, turn the T V on at six thirty, or come to the board meeting and watch the board meetings happen. Thank you.
Mrs. Soffler.
Um, just one other note. We, uh, when I was first on this board, we actually used to meet at seven o'clock and we changed it to six o'clock and we actually had improved participation, not just in community members, but in administrators. And, um, we, we actually did the exact same thing that was back in the two thousand eight and everything. So we specifically switched it from seven until six o'clock in order to have more participation and in order to give board members an opportunity to get out in the community following board meetings to participate in events that were taking place.
Mr. Persia.
I was going to say, I wasn't sure what happened. I was gonna ask Megan to look it up for me because I don't remember. But I remember it was seven o'clock, we did change it back, we did have more participation. Uh, the township board had lead meetings at six o'clock here. It, it's a community-wide type thing, that are, are tight. Uh, no offense, Sean Paul, but you mentioned how you have to take vacation two days or whatever type time to get here on time. I think it is a little bit selfish. I have not heard anyone wanting to move it back to a later date. I did get compliments when we moved it from the seven to the six because staff, uh, doesn't have a chance if they're not living in our community. They have to stay here, they don't have a chance to go home and make dinner and watch my T V. They have a chance to stay here, do the meeting, get done with it, and then go home and make dinner. It just, and again, it's the last minute. We can vote on it and pass it tonight, as, as in the next meeting, it can be voted and changed and rehacked. This is, we can change our minds each and every meeting to change things. We have a motion in front of us and I call the question.
Mr. Torres.
The question they called, we have to get a hold of. Please.
I think that's the President's chair, isn't it?
No, it's Robert's rules.
It is?
Yes.
All right. I don't, uh, do we have a copy of Robert's rules where we can? I can't imagine that that's, you know, that's why I have.
The question that they, it all makes the discussion with the vote for it or don't vote for, we go back and forth and talk about all that. And again, if you order down, read, do it, well, go back.
Well, a statement was made, a statement was made.
It's not an option, guys. All right, let's, all right.
A statement was directed at me, so I wanna answer it, sir.
No, there's not an option.
That's very totalitarian.
They're under the rules.
It's democracy. It's democracy.
All right, there's been a motion.
Well, there, there has been a.
A motion and it has been seconded.
There has, there's been a comment directed towards me by Mr. Patricia and I feel that I have a right to.
No, sir.
To answer.
The call, the question hasn't been called.
Was it unflattering?
Sir.
Comment that was made by one board member to another.
Can you please take over this meeting?
All right, there's been a motion and approval. All those in favor?
Is this the motion that's in?
That's for six o'clock.
For six o'clock.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor? All of those? Motion fails three to four. With that, we will, um, ask to have this put back on the agenda. Next meeting, Kevin Megan.
My understanding would be that the meeting stays at six o'clock. That would be such a time as there is a motion that changes the time.
All right, Mr. Board President. I would like to make a motion, uh, that we approve the schedule as it states here on the agenda, uh, with an amendment to the time so that it would read, it is recommended that regular meetings of the Waterford Board of Education be scheduled per the list below on the first and third Thursday of each month with expectations, uh, with exceptions. Board main meetings will be held at six thirty P M. at Waterford Township Hall Auditorium, fifty-two hundred Civic Center Drive, Waterford, Michigan, unless otherwise, unless posted otherwise. The two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty schedule, uh, would be as follows. July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, August first, two thousand nineteen, August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, September fifth, two thousand nineteen, September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, October third, two thousand nineteen.
I can just say it's presented.
October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. I, I think the precedent being technical has been set, so I wanna be November seventh, two thousand nineteen, November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, December fifth, two thousand nineteen, December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty, February sixth, two thousand twenty, February twenty, 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 March fifth, two thousand twenty, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, April second, two thousand twenty, uh, April sixteen, two thousand twenty, May seventh, two thousand twenty, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, and June eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, just for full transparency, so I, so move.
There's been a motion supported. Are there any comments or questions?
Uh, just my comment, if I may. I just wanna say, uh, I wanna address the issue that I brought it up about, uh, myself having to leave work, work early, which is my commitment to the community, but I brought it up because I believe that my situation is emblematic of a lot of the younger families that live here in this district who are trying to get support in this thing.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? Six thirty, yes. All of those? Motion passes seven to three. Treasurer, Megan.
Can I just add a comment there? I just wanna make sure that it's clear to everyone that this does not begin until July of two thousand nineteen.
Treasurer, Megan.
Okay. Um, so, bond authorizing resolution. Uh, the administration recommends approval of the attached resolution that provides for authorization by the Board of Education for the influence of, um, influence of school district bond, two thousand sixteen, series four, not to exceed nineteen million, five hundred thirty thousand. This will be the last consequence of the two thousand sixteen, one hundred million dollar authorization. I surrender.
Support. Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Persia.
You're spending this money also fast. That last hundred million took you fifteen years. Sorry.
Hence up to me.
Yeah, but again, it wasn't about fifteen years to do this for the last two.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's a poor, we need an economic situation with this, it's a mission to improve, it's not a pressing, now, this is a.
We can't hear him back here at all. I don't know if the speakers are not on or what, but we just can't hear a thing back there. They speak.
They are, just so we know. The Cable Commission the other night did approve for a whole new sound system that's gonna be put in here the next month. So I know he, he's speaking loud, it's, the mics are old, they're, within a month or two, we're gonna have a whole new sound system.
Okay.
So maybe we can come back a couple months and they were expanding, you know, you did that right there.
James said the other table might, might work.
I don't know, maybe just wait until we're not, yeah. It's a good sense, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, you're, you're right. Uh, the, uh, it took a very long time to issue the original hundred million. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a combination of many things. Um, we've paid out, paid off quite a bit of principal payments over these years. Um, the economy has improved very well in the Waterford School District and, uh, were able to issue these bonds much, much faster. Um, and during the economic crisis, we also took, uh, say, advantage of a bad situation and extremely low interest rates. We refinanced all of our debt, it was outstanding at the time, and stayed almost, uh, eleven million dollars to the taxpayers in, um, interest income or interest, uh, expense that we can spend on other projects while we're issuing these bonds faster because.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, Mr. Hulson. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor? It passes seven to zero. Treasurer, Megan.
Um, do you, do you want to read the title? Resilience, okay. Superintendent's Recommendation sixty-one eighteen nineteen. Resolution, section one three five two of revised school code, school district bond, two thousand sixteen, series four. The administration recommends the approval of the attached resolution that enables the school district to comply with a provision of section one three five two of the revised school code with respect to contracting for legal representation by a law firm for the school district's issuance of, of its school district, two thousand sixteen, series four. District bond, series, two thousand sixteen, series four, isolated.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
Superintendent's Recommendation sixty-two dash eighteen dash nineteen, policy seventy-five forty point oh four, staff technology, acceptable use and safety. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve policy seventy-five forty point oh four as revised, removing the optional language provided by NEOL on pages six of seven with regard to an employee's personal or private use of social media. I surrender.
Support. Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Soffler.
This is what we've already discussed in an information meeting and then again, as an action item and voted on, and it's back before us, worded differently, I believe, to remove the whole paragraph. Is that correct?
Yes. I don't include the whole paragraph. It's an optional paragraph. That's motion.
This is a paragraph that we already put in.
It would correct you last time, if the board would select it for inclusion, this time it's being selected to be. Mrs. Soffler.
I, I have several issues with this. The first is on principle. We've already talked about this ad nauseam. Uh, the vote was taken and we, as a board, expected to move on instead of revisiting things of this nature. Secondly, twenty-six attorneys, school attorneys who specialize in school law have deemed this as a, as a necessary piece of, of policy that is carried out throughout the state in all other districts, not all, I don't know which districts, included and don't include it, but are, are brought forward for all other districts in the state of Michigan. Um, we talked at great length about the concerns on this and, um, took a vote. Uh, my concern is for the Waterford School District, that without a policy that precludes this, that we, that we are tying the hands of our administration and our staff members to not have recourse. And what we're saying by excluding this is that, let me just clearly outline this, that they do have the right, by excluding this paragraph, we do not have recourse if they post inflammatory comments that could compromise the district's mission, undermine staff relationships, or cause a substantial disruption to the school environment. So we're saying, we don't need those protections, that it is okay for people to post inflammatory comments that could compromise the district's mission, undermine staff relationships, or cause a substantial disruption to the school environment. Our employees have a right to do that. By removing this policy, we're, we're tying the hands of our administration and there's no recourse to bring that forward and say, this is a problem and we need to address it.
Mr. Torres.
Um, it, it's obvious, there's a lot of passion behind this. I expect Mrs. Soffler's, uh, passion on this issue. I'm very passionate about it as well. We did have a, a full debate about this, um, at, uh, these two board meetings this past year. Um, the, the reason why, uh, I've asked to have this added, or did add this to the agenda, uh, tonight was that we do have a new board. Uh, the bylaw was adopted, um, at, at a time where we had an outgoing board member and we were aware that the, that member would be no longer a part of this board as of January one. So as of January one, we do have one new board member at least, so this is a new board. Um, and I had asked this to be brought back before the board so that all people, all persons, all board members that are gonna be affected, uh, or part of this bylaw are actually, um, have voted on it. Uh, the redaction of the specific language, uh, in, uh, the bylaw seven five four is Uh, the redaction of the specific language, uh, in, uh, the bylaw seven five four zero point zero four, uh, is on page six of seven, um, and it is a checkbox that this would uncheck. Uh, and, and this was presented, uh, by NEOL, um, to us, and it reads, uh, in full as, "An employee's personnel or private use, personal or private use of social media may have unintended consequences. While the board respects an employee's First Amendment right, those rights do not include permission to post inflammatory comments that could compromise the district's mission, undermine staff relationships, or cause a substantial disruption to the school environment. This warning includes staff members' online conduct that occurs off school property, including from these employees' private computer. Postings to social media should be done in a manner sensitive to the staff members' professional duties." Now, um, my take on this is that it does, this does infringe upon our employees' constitutional right to free speech. The, uh, there was a lot of discussion about the word inflammatory, depending upon which dictionary you look in, uh, or what website you go to, or what Google search you do, you can likely find a definition that fits your motives. Um, I have reviewed several definitions of the, the word inflammatory, one from Webster's Dictionary, uh, that has been in existence since eighteen twenty eight, and another one from a, uh, Black Laws Dictionary that, uh, has the Constitution of the United States of America in the appendix, and, and nowhere does it say that the word inflammatory, uh, means untrue. So, my problem is, is that people have a right to say what they want to say as long as it is factually true, and they are harmed in some way, and my fear is that an employee is harmed in some way by this district, and they want to voice their concerns in some way, that I feel that this bylaw does infringe upon their right to be able to do that, their right to voice, uh, their concern about something that may be occurring. So for me, that is very important. I also fear that we, as a district, could be opening ourselves to lawsuits by infringing upon our right to free speech. They could involve a federal issue, uh, before the courts, which could be very costly to this district. So I simply ask that we uncheck this box, and by unchecking it, it does not mean that the district does not have any recourse to take legal action against somebody that defames our district. If somebody goes out there and says something negative about our district and it's not true, we have a, a right to file a civil court against them in the civil court system. And we have a lot of resources to do that. We have talked, we are a hundred million dollar a year plus, uh, entity, so we do have a lot of resources and a lot of authority, and when you think of a, a entity that has such resources, putting forth a bylaw against their employees that says that they cannot go to social media and use inflammatory language, to me, that ties our employees' hands and infringes upon their right to free speech in anything. As an institution, an educational entity, that, uh, that supports free thinking, that supports, um, the, the ideas of creating, uh, new ideas and, and speaking your mind, because we are an educational system, I think this really sends a bad message to our students, to our families, uh, and to our community. Um, and I would just add again that this, uh, by removing this bylaw, we still have every right to seek legal action against anybody that speaks, uh, in a way against the district that, where they are slandering us or, or saying untruths about us. We have every right in the civil courts, but we constitutionally, in my opinion, don't have a right to go after them or speak in the truth. Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson.
I was gonna say something.
Okay.
Um, thank you. I actually stay in the audience and heard you guys discuss this at length. My issue with this being in here is the word may. You may, or you may not be in trouble. Who's in trouble? Who's not in trouble? Who decides? Is it the person, the building principal that doesn't like you, that allows somebody to do it, but somebody else not to do it? I don't like the wording of this at all. I don't like the may. I don't, I just don't like it at all. I don't like the, the fact that it's, it's left up to somebody to decide, and somebody could do it, and somebody else couldn't do it, and it's just not consistent. It doesn't make it consistent. Now, if it said, you will have, you know, ramifications or something will happen if you do this, that's a totally different story, but may lose it up to interpretation, and I just don't like that.
Mrs. Sullivan.
I think any policy in a, in a organization, a corporate policy is the same way, that there has to be some fundamental ability to make judgment calls on when it rises to the occasion of requiring discipline, which is why the word may is probably there. Um, but I do recognize that it would be clearer if it was of, of an absolute, but I think we have to be really careful with absolutes there, because there are often shades of gray when it comes to this kind of thing. What I'm incredibly disturbed about is that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, John Paul, your advice is that if we do have someone in our district, rather than having a policy that says we can take disciplinary action if this occurs, your advice is that we have, that we sue them?
No, well, my, yeah, we have every right to sue someone.
I understand we have a right, but your advice is that we should use school dollars that could be used in a classroom for children, because we are not bold enough to put a policy in place to say that this is not okay, that we should use those tax dollars that could be in the classroom buying books and paying for teachers and giving teachers raises. Instead, we should set a precedence that what we're going to do.
To the contrary, your statement is that we would, uh, continue to keep this language and most likely have to go to a civil court or have the federal courts step in, somebody file a federal case against us, and then again, we are using taxpayer dollars, money that could be going to the teachers, money that could be going to the classroom, money that could be going to help our students get a fantastic education, continue to get the fantastic education that they get in this school district. So, there's an argument for both sides. You're afraid that, that, you know, what you're saying is that we would have to sue someone civilly, and what I'm saying is that somebody could take, is more likely to create legal action against us if we have this in place, and it would be a very costly legal action, because this would be a federal case. So, there is a lot of, in this country right now, that there is a lot of infringement upon people's free speech right. We see that all the time. We see it in the media. We see reporters, uh, being attacked, right? And if I have any say in it, I don't want anybody's right to free speech, to, uh, right to free speech, to be compromised in any way. We are a democracy. We are an educational institution. We should be encouraging free thinking, free speech, and I think that this bylaw goes against it. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Sorry. The, the wording, the giffs, the mayes, and whatever, but it, it says in here, this is a warning, this gives us a little, it gives us something, hey, you can't say this, you can't do that, common decency. Uh, I, John Paul. Do we have anything you have over me? Is you can kiss my ass and I can't? That's a fact. No, that's a fact, that's a statement, that's a statement that I'm saying, because it's free speech. That, it's free speech. If I say that, that is inflammatory, that is wrong. If you don't have teeth in it, we have nothing in here, and yet, John Paul, you were the one saying it's, it's a fact, and that's a fact. These are the things that are facts. So this is what, this has teeth, and it says it may be, or it's a warning, we are not taking people for it, we are not suing people. It just is a warning, hey, you shouldn't do that. Heads up, that's a world of four. And this gives us that opportunity.
Mrs. Hall.
Um, I mean, first of all, it should be common sense, as a functioning adult, that you wouldn't do this on social media. It's a poor representation of yourself, it's a poor representation for your children that are probably reading it, or somebody else's child that's reading it. This is not saying you can't do it, it's just gonna say, it's just saying that there might be consequences if you do it. You might get your hands slapped, you, nobody's gonna keep you from putting that stuff on social media, it's just saying, there's, there are consequences, there are consequences to our actions in any realm, in any sector, there are consequences, and, I don't know.
Dr. Wonderland, do we have any, um, policy in place now or any rule? This is, this is an option, you know, it's not, it, it sounds good, but it, but it's an option, it's a check, you don't have to check. So I know when they created this, there were some questions in their mind too, maybe it is, maybe it's not, otherwise, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in this policy, it's not checkbox, checkbox material, like take an option, this one is. So, I, I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, that they had some reservations maybe too, because they, they knew the option to take this choice, this, this selection. Do we have any rules, policy right now, that if any employee does say something awful on social media, can we do anything? I know in the past, we've had parents that have said some not-so-nice things against administrators, and we have taken action. So, we've, we've done it already in the past, when this wording was not in any of our policies. Do we have that, or is that available to do?
Immediately below the optional section that says, "Users should disregard this policy and as company guidelines, may have the privilege to suspend or revoke disciplinary action taken against them. Users are personally responsible and liable, both civilly and criminally, to district technology and information resources." That's not optional, it's not an optional section that's in there. Uh, there are, uh, twenty-two lawyers that create this, um, they don't want us changing any of the language that they have, uh, created, but they wouldn't put a checkbox there unless they thought that this was, uh, an option. So, so even just below this, uh, there are some protections, maybe that way is strongly worded, but there are some protections for the, the school district.
And that's not up for deletion, we're, that's in and we're keeping that, I mean, that's.
Yeah, the actual part is simple, so this is new language, the other stuff's already in our policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Torres.
Uh, and I, just to clarify, I did check with the administration, I did work, um, with Ms. Roberts, and, uh, she was very diligent in, uh, helping me confirm that if we were just gonna, uh, take out this box and out the entire bylaw, uh, and still be able to, uh, fall within the realm of recommendations that were given to us, uh, by NEOL. So, we're just, uh, checking this box, just as to this paragraph, and again, I indicated that I had an issue, uh, because I do believe it infringes upon our, uh, employees' constitutional right to free speech, I don't want to be part of that. This is a board, uh, with one board member, it says, uh, we do have a board, but when one board member's gone, there's always coming in. So, uh, I, I want this issue dropped, again, because this would affect that new board member and the right to vote on this issue.
Mrs. Sullivan.
On that note, um, part being an effective board member, I have all kinds of literature up here, if you'd like to take a look at it, but you take a vote as a board, whether you win or lose that vote, you move on, and you move to the next decision. I'm trying to understand, we have a new board member, how far back are we gonna go and revisit items when, when things didn't go your way?
No, well, if I could answer that, one, I would say, you often cite, uh, the, the guidelines for an effective board member and cite the Michigan Association of School Boards, but I, that completely nullifies everything for me, because back six months ago, when Michigan Association of School Boards put forth a timeline for Superintendent's Recommendation, you didn't follow it. And at that time, and at that time, if I may, if I may just finish my thought, you indicated that it was just a recommendation from the Michigan Association of School Boards.
It's a guideline, that's very good.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Uh, Mrs. Sullivan, so.
These are not guidelines, these are not guidelines.
So, what, what I will say is that we have one new board member, right? This is an issue that was voted on when an outgoing board member was leaving, we knew that that board member was going to be leaving, so I think this sets a precedent in any way. I think what it does is it just clarifies, um, the bylaws for a new board member who this is going to affect. Now, I, if this passes, it passes, if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't pass and it's null. There's no precedent being, being set.
But you are, I'm asking you, where do you draw the line? How far back are you gonna go?
I think I just explained that.
Is it just this one thing that you think we'll have to revisit?
Well, you know, I, I would say that, well, I think this, this new board member should have a right, or any new board member should have a right when we have a new board, to have a say over the bylaws that are affecting them.
So, we cannot govern in that.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna call for a vote. There's been a motion and support, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four three.
Uh, Superintendent's Recommendation sixty three dash eighteen dash nineteen, resolution objecting to the issuance or transfer of license. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution objecting to the Pontiac Lake Incorporated request to transfer ownership of an existing specially designated distributor license to be located at three thousand Pontiac Lake Road, Waterford, Oakdale County, and so move. Support.
Motion's been moved and supported, are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Hall.
Uh, this is a no-brainer, in my humble opinion. Um, I think reducing accessibility is critical in this fight, and there's absolutely no reason to have something, uh, located so close to the schools.
Mr. Torres. Do you know if it's selling or serving of the gold members? I think it was at the gas station, so it should just sell it, sell it, okay?
Mr. Torres.
Uh, I just want to thank the administration's diligence in catching this, uh, I know this is something that was sprung on them, uh, very last minute, um, and, uh, it was a, uh, something we had to move fast on if we were going to consider it, and like Ms. Hall's and the kids, if it was a no-brainer, it's just a gas station, uh, can you afford to not, uh, be serving alcohol, though I, uh, so, selling, yeah, sorry, selling alcohol, uh, but I believe, and, and we're right to do that, um, the fact that it's so close to the school, um, and this is a location we have had issues with in the past, um, with a synthetic, uh, marijuana issue was going out, um, so I, I want to make sure that we're protecting our kids and keeping them away from any kind of substances, uh, any kind of medications that could be out there and, and, uh, I would support this resolution.
Mrs. Parker.
Um, I agree, I support this resolution, but I just want to, just because of our, um, discourse tonight and, um, people being upset that things are brought up today for discussion, um, and then it was a surprise, and they want two more weeks, this came to us today, and we thought about it, and we're all gonna take a vote on it today. So, this is a bigger issue than changing the time from six thirty to seven thirty or changing order of the agenda, uh, but those needed, we needed two weeks to think about all that, um, so I just, I just find it, I, you know, I just think that this, I just found it, as I was saying, that that was kind of interesting, that this, of course, was brought to us today, I think the email came, like, really late in the day, I didn't actually open it until, like, five o'clock. I get it, I'm gonna go for it, but that's how responsible boards work, they get new information and go on that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Fisher. And again, we did get this, the other information I have, questions made is, I've got no information on it, it was sprung, I mean, this I had, and this is a timeline that is, unless we have to do it in a certain amount of time right here, so there's not an option. And again, I have worked for things in the past, when they called this emergency, you had to buy something, you have to sell something, that are timed, a decision type thing, I have turned down every time.
Any others? All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Uh, with that, we will move to audience comments on non-action items. Again, keep prized of the, um, rules, if you'd like to keep comments, five minutes or less, no derogatory comments. Uh, first I have Keith Van, Ken Vanmore, and after that will be Jessica Pumper.
First, I have Keith Van, Ken Vanmore, and after that will be Jessica Humphrey.
I'm one of the citizens we'd like to thank who turned to change it to 6:30. Because I'm always, always late. I'm always, some of my grandkids or some meeting I have to attend, they decide they're going to meet till 5:30 and I can't get from Detroit back here. So I appreciate that time change. Does that matter at all? As far as you have a better thing to do, truthfully, I think if you've got a better thing to do and take care of the kids in this community, you've got a fine job. That's my thought. You've got a better thing to do. You're in the wrong location. We'd like to thank the new board for coming and being here and new members of the board. And I'm just glad you're all here and ready to go to work again. Thank you for bringing me in here.
Next, we have Jessica Humphrey.
I'm Jessica Humphrey. I didn't really plan on coming up here tonight, so I'm a little on... First, I'd like to, I know the agenda was moved for tonight, but originally it was proposed that it was moved for the superintendent to speak all the way before all of the public comments. And I, as a public community member who likes to throw up a comment every now and then, just personally feel like it would be a shame for the superintendent to not be able to comment on any of the public comments that have been during the meeting. I don't really understand why he would be here through the meeting and throw up the comments if he doesn't really have to speak at any of it. He has to speak before all of it. But that's just my take on it. I also wanted to throw in my opinion. Mr. Torres speaks multiple times, but I'll have him speak for the young families in the community, the young kids. I'm a 28-year-old mom with a five and a nine-year-old. I don't want to miss bedtime, honestly. It's 8 o'clock already. You guys took 25 minutes to get through the beginning of the agenda. As a mom who has had a son come here, a nine-year-old, multiple times, to have him here until 7 o'clock just to get his chance to come up here and do his thing and however long that takes, that would be a great expense for my family. That would be a hard time. He would be late for dinner, late for bed, school the next day. You know, my son is on spectrum, so we try to keep his bedtime very regulated. And personally, I know a half hour might not be a big deal for some people, but it is for us. And it would just be a shame to not have that opportunity or to have to sacrifice some of my son's time for that. And then last, I just wanted to touch on what seems important to some people. Michigan Association of School Boards and their inability of effective board members and effective meetings. Under board members, it says that you should focus the board agenda and meeting on issues related to improving student achievement. I just wanted to recap. Tonight, you guys argued about social media policies again. I just sat through so long that you guys argued if the superintendent gets to speak before you or after you. And you guys argued about your meeting start time and if you have to take time from your job to that. And I just wonder when we're going to circle back around to the kids and student achievement and what's really supposed to be focused on here. Thank you.
Was there anyone else that would have told the... You're next.
Because I can't resist. So my name is Mary. I am a life-threatening teacher and a life-threatening parent for kids that, well, one that won't come home to wake. A mental hopper, she was bound to say that. Who gave up many nights to be here when I probably should have been taking care of them. Here's my complaint. Last year, when I voted on the contract, would you like to see what was said about me on social media? They didn't say it about any of you. They said it about me. Because as the union president, I didn't do what I should have done for my teachers. They were blown up. You never let me sue my colleagues because they're saying horrendous things about me on Facebook. Why the heck do we spend $100,000 on an anti-bullying campaign? This is exactly what we don't want our kids to do. I just got done with my eighth graders telling them freedom of speech. Not me. You can go on social media and tell somebody, "You're fucking stupid. You're ugly. You're not addressed, you fuck."
Please, the language.
Sorry. But that's, but that's what the kids are saying. They're really upset. They don't understand. Why can't we say it? If I think he's ugly, why can't I say it? So whose definition of the truth is it going to be? And if we want the bullying to stop with our kids, then the adults in this community better start acting like the role models they need. And I don't want any of my teachers on social media saying anything about any of you that I would want somebody saying about one of my students. And I don't want my students on social media saying anything about a teacher. And believe me, it's happened. There have been some pretty crazy things that kids have posted on Instagram about teachers. But why should we allow that to happen? This whole world has gone crazy with the lack of dignity and respect and freedom of speech, which our frameworks and our founding fathers was not meant so that we could... To express a viewpoint does not mean you're calling people names and treating people horribly. I'm sorry about the language, but after Mr. Patricia, what you said. But that was, that was the whole point. If you're going to say things, where do you draw the line? And where do we draw the line with our students on what's acceptable to say? I find that really hard. Because I know that if I don't bring my teachers a really good contract this year, guess who's going to take the heat for it on social media? And it won't be anyone who's sitting up there. They're coming after me. And I will guarantee you, they're coming after me. I'm the one that got the phone calls. I'm the one that got the posts on social media. And you know what I was told by Laura Turet? She said, "Mary, you're going to have to grow a thick skin with this job because there are people that you will never please." And I said, "Mary, you sound exactly like my dad did." When I got bullied at school and my dad said, "You know what? Kids are just mean. But we're going to spend $100,000 on this, making sure that kids know how to treat each other." But yet none of the adults in this community are doing it? I'm really having trouble with this. So if we're going to spend time telling our kids how to act, maybe we should be listening to them. Because I have eighth graders that act better than any of the adults I see on social media. So I'm really proud to be a life-threatening teacher. I'm proud of my students. Thank you.
Mr. Patricia, I'm Mike Delmo. I'm not going to use your name. I'm so trying to figure out what social media is. I've been, yeah, I've been at the meetings here for the last year or so. And seriously, starting off tonight, it's the first one in the year and I'm just going like, this is sad. It's sad. You can obviously see there's some people in lockstep and there's some people not in lockstep, but you're forgetting the whole idea, the mission that the lady talked about about really is about kids. And I'm thinking, we had this long discussion about who goes first. And I know that they don't want me, you know, they don't want me to speak last. I don't blame them for that. That would not be good. But with having the supervisor, he's always close to meetings and they've been on an up note even when everything else hasn't been on an up note, to take him out of that place. And I'm thinking, there's nothing that you as a board that can say that could top the up note because you haven't done it yet. I seriously take into concern and I've listened to, it brought up about different school boards, all the different school boards in the area that are doing this and that. And that's coming from somebody that hasn't been at a board meeting in the last nine out of 10. And, but she knows where, what every other school board's doing, but I'm not sure she knows what's going on in this one. I think that's a problem. You want to, you know, don't be saying what everybody else, other school board is doing and you haven't even been at this one. You have a problem. And for members on the board that are having their sporadic moments every meeting about verbiage and trying to think that this part of the 26 lawyers. I never had a job. I never worked at a job where I knew I could run my mouth about my employer and not expect repercussions. And if the Waterford School Board is going to have, you know, given out jobs and they say, "Oh, by the way, you can say whatever you want to say because there are no repercussions." We have free speech. Run your mouth. And I'm thinking, I've never worked in a place like that. And I can't imagine, I can't imagine us putting that in there where somebody can run their mouth, social media or otherwise, and not have repercussions. That's crazy. I've never heard of that. That's pretty much all I have to say, other than sitting in the audience, people sitting in the audience and watching and listening to some of the foolishness from adults that are supposed to be supposedly overseeing a $100 million organization and you're not as smart as the people you're overseeing. You need to shut up and pay attention and watch and quit talking. And really, I apologize, but you can't sit out there without being upset and listening to that foolishness. Forgive me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to... Yes.
So you mean this came to kids at Kettering? I'm going to switch the topic a little bit tonight. I wanted to welcome Ms. Jocelyn. Congratulations. I put my thoughts together in favor, so I wouldn't stand over too much tonight to see if I could work through it. So I've attended and watched many of the school board meetings on videos because it's available online. And I've noticed a few issues that continue to come up in the discussion. Three that come, that have stood out to me are that there's a demand for smaller class sizes, that the fund balance is desired to be at a higher percentage rate, and that we need to increase the staff pay and give them their steps. So I just have noticed this coming up in other meetings. It came up Monday night at the special meeting. And I feel like as a board, we'll need to have a common direction and give some unanimous direction to the administration on these issues. You need to pick one and prioritize. They are all very important, but we have a finite amount of money that is allocated to us and only one of those issues can truly be improved at a time. And if, I feel like what I've noticed is that as soon as the administrators present on one of these topics, someone in the board says, "Oh, well, what about, but what about class size? But class sizes should be smaller. It's, you know, we just gave all this money to teachers, but class size should be smaller." Oh, but then if they, you know, do something about class sizes, "Oh, well, fund balance. Fund balance needs to be bigger. Fund balance should be bigger and we need to..." Oh, then if you talk about the fund balance and how wonderful it is that we're over the 5%, "Oh, but we haven't given our teachers a raise and..." Ah, oh, 2%. And there's never any, like, let's focus on one thing, okay? So obviously, class size is dictated by contracts. And we've heard reports that our class sizes in our district are very, are great. There's often a bubble that comes up and makes one, you'll get the anomaly of a big, you know, you have three third-grade classrooms in one building one year and that moves up. And so there might be that, but for the most part, class size really, I don't think is our issue that we need to focus on. So when you have three buckets, they all need money, but there's only so much coming in. If you sprinkle a little bit in each bucket, you're not getting anything of value added. So our fund balance, Mr. Holbrook has explained it many times. Our balance is over the 5% required by the state. Now, we're not on their radar. We don't have to worry about any, anyone from the state coming in and taking over our situation here. So it's outside of our circle of control right now because the state is not going to give us enough money to make a big dent in that and make it so that we don't have to borrow a lot of money when we have that time of our budget is due and we have to save what we're spending and the state is giving us our money. So there's always going to be that time that we need to borrow money and we're going to pay the interest on that. There's no way around that. So I really, I would like to see the board focus on how we're going to increase teacher pay and give teachers some steps. That really would be nice to see some unanimous direction given on that. I feel like it would just be nice if we can start the new year fresh. You can tell, I wrote this at 9:00 this morning. I have really, really high hopes. I was horrendously locked down. Horrendously locked down. Still, it's the same old song and dance up here. It's the same old thing. Old grudges coming up. I am so tired about what happened six months ago in a meeting, a year ago in a meeting, whatever. Move on. They're all, I'm crying out loud, if my kids gave me that? Well, what about, well, Ben did. Well, what about Ben? You know what I tell him? You don't worry about what they're doing, you worry about what you're doing. This is just getting so old. It's getting so old. I really wish that we could move on. So the micromanaging of our administrators, not letting them do their job. It's, it's really, Monday's meeting was ridiculous. It was unnecessary. It went on and on and on, talking about old and picky issues. I know, I'm running into my five minutes.
Actually, I didn't start the timer. I was just kind of looking, but I have to give you a few more seconds. It's not like we didn't keep you here a little bit, so.
So, oh, and then you start talking. I get my second stick. So here's the thing. I would also like to see everyone attending the one-on-ones with the superintendent make sure, maybe we're better informed when we come to the meetings. We can do better at having a consensus when you get to talk about an issue. So, thank you.
I think you spoke about an action item before, right?
Oh, that's interesting.
I have sat back here wishing I could comment and you pointed it out. Yes, I would appreciate meetings starting at 6:30. As you noticed, I just barely made it in here. I was standing at the back when the pledge was being set. Having the superintendent speak, and I spoke to this before, you probably forgot, when Ms. Jocelyn spoke about her two twin boys and a neighbor that were not on the bus driver's bus list on the first day of school. They did not know where to go. They found out from somebody else where the stop usually was. And she asked, "Are these boys on the list?" Because we have not received a postcard, nobody's answering the phone, nobody's telling us anything. Superintendent Wunder looked, smoothed it over at the end by, "Well, when they get in high school, things are a little mixed up and the kids start driving themselves and the buses, you know, they, they will space out regulate after a while." The boys were not on the bus driver's bus list. I don't care how many people drive themselves. They are not on the bus list. They were overlooked. He did not address that, that these three children, and there were approximately 1,200 district-wide that were not assigned buses and on the bus driver's bus list. That was the issue. And you're arguing again over this social media thing? I go back to defining plebatory.
Actually, that, that one you'd already talked about, so I'm going to stop you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Brandt.
Well, I did have a topic I wanted to talk to you all about tonight and hopefully I can get to it. But tonight's meeting was extraordinary. Bob, my advice to you is to buy a gavel and go take a Robert's Rule of Order class immediately. And I know you and I are somewhat alike in that we're really not... And I know you and I are somewhat alike, and that we're really nice guys, and we like to let everything kind of lock all doors in our meetings, but, um...
Hey, Rank, it's not, please sit.
But, um, you know, I, I, and my meetings run forever also. Um, but knowing Robert's Rules of Orders, if people are gonna start throwing them out, then you need to learn what Robert's Rule of Orders are, and how a motion comes to the floor, and how a counter motion gets addressed versus the real motion, and I think it would then take me to the day. For everybody, uh, that's been sitting in these meetings, I've come to the meetings for two years. Actually, two years ago, this meeting was the first one, Bob. Robert Bieber in the tuxedo, and he were being sworn in, and he became president. And that's the first time that I, I met Mr. Fortusia. He became the board member two, two years ago, two years ago. And I, and I met this, Bob, he became the liaison to Waterford Youth Assistance, and that's the first time you and I ever talked. Um, and it's clear to everybody in the audience, you know, for the last two years, it was a four-three vote, it was a four-three vote. Now it's a four-three vote in a different direction. And as you've seen with our exchange of presidents of the United States, all of the presidential whatevers that, well, President Trump reversed the law, and I don't know where the end of that is, but I respect every single one of you up on that, on that podium. I've talked to all of you individually, you're all great people, you're all very patient, reach out to each other before these meetings, can get together in groups of two and three and discuss issues. We don't need to sit out here for 25 minutes while you figure out your agenda. You should have your agenda set before the start. We shouldn't have discussions as to what time the meeting starts. That's a motion that you should have decided, if you were gonna bring it up, bring it up, vote on it, whatever, but you should come out and have a united front on simple procedural items. And, and I could go on and on, but I really wanted to talk about National Mentoring Month, which is this month, and I'll be, and I'm patient about that. It's apparently a national, um, school board week or month also, and I began volunteering as a mentor. Um, part of an organization that has two mentoring programs. Uh, Youth Assistance has Bucket of Love, a community, our school-based program, and we have Mentors Plus. I encourage everybody in the community to consider becoming a mentor. It's a very noble activity, guiding a student who may not have the, 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 the support, the family support of two parents and grandparents and brothers and sisters. And when they have a decision to make, they're reaching out to their peers, another 10 or 11-year-old for advice, not generally a good idea. Um, so as an adult, you're another adult voice that can talk to a student, and maybe just maybe on occasion, something that you've thought to them about will register with them instead of making a bad decision or choose to remove themselves from a situation. You have a ton of activities that you can do, play cards, get, get a soda, go to a school baseball game or basketball game, or go to a play. Um, you have fun events that you can do. You also have moments where you're, where they suddenly trust you enough to ask questions that you can help make that difference. That's the moment you live for. Um, I've mentored two kids for seven or eight years, and never thought that one had any desire whatsoever. When we first met him, he didn't want to go to, the idea of going to school after graduation was, was laughable to him, although he's away at school right now. And when I met up with him over the holiday season to do our annual cookie baking, he said that this was the best holiday he had because he felt that he finally had a purpose and a direction in life, and it's like one of those moments where, you know, wow, thank you, you know? He can have that opportunity, or he can just be a, a friend to a student. We've got a, give me 30 seconds. We have a ton of kids that have great parental support, and we're proud of them, and they do great athletics, they do great, um, in drama. We saw an example of that tonight. We have robotics teams that we're proud of, you know? They have great parental support. There are other students in this community that need an additional voice, and I ask you to consider, you don't have to be a mentor plus mentor, just consider becoming a mentor to, up to a student and help make a difference. One person making a difference in one other person's life, you don't have to, you know, it, it, that's the way I approached it. I was tired of throwing money at charities that wouldn't, you know, all I wanted to do was get, you know, more money, so I decided to take that step, and from there, I grew and grew it with, you know, and Alan volunteering at other organizations. So please consider reaching out and becoming a mentor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi. My name is Kelly Hall. Um, I am a taxpayer in Waterford. I am also a parent of two boys in the district, and I'm also an employee of the district. I am here at this meeting, and 90% of your meetings, as a parent first, always a parent first. Um, but I do want to touch on the social media, a nightmare that you guys have been dealing with. Every company has a policy of what is acceptable to be put on social media. It's just the way it is. We have a constitutional right to carry, to bear arms, but there's laws and rules against it taking into public places, so we don't do that. It is common sense, like Mrs. Hall said, it is common sense and decent for people not to go to social media to vent their anger. John Hall, your biggest complaint is that you want, if an employee is hurt by the district, you want them to be able to go to social media and raise it there. Why? Why would that be a recommendation?
Free speech is my complaint, borders and stuff.
It doesn't, but the paragraph that you guys are arguing about for three meetings now does not tell you you cannot do it. It says there may be repercussions for doing it, okay? You're encouraging...
It's a threat.
Okay. The, the, what we're getting up here is that you want the employees to feel like it's okay to go to social media and trash Waterford schools. My kids go to these schools, I work for these schools, and I pay taxes for these schools. I don't want anybody trashing, nobody. I don't go on social media trashing. I had a bad day at work today, too. My kids made me mad. I don't go to social media and turn that, because my moral compass points north. And I don't understand why you would be encouraging our employees to go to social media to vent an anger. There's a proper chain of command. It, you just go to your, you know, your superior and their superior, you go that way. To encourage our people to go on social media is irresponsible on your part. Secondly, my next point, this bickering is disgusting. I would never bring my children to a meeting like this. You want to move the meetings up to 6:30 so we can get more people? For what? So we can divide the lines and say, "Who's gonna speak up and, and raise our hand when three of you say something or four of you say something?" Because it's divided. And yes, we have a new board number, so we're gonna go through and go back through every policy and every vote that was done last year and redo it, because now you can make it swing your way. Disgusting. I'm embarrassed tonight to be a Waterford employee and a Waterford citizen, and that makes me sad.
Actually, Mr. Van Horn, you already got your five minutes, so it's one, five minutes per person. But we have another meeting next month.
I just had a question, because I didn't, I didn't understand. It sounds like for this gentleman, and he may know a lot more than me, it sounds like they've taken away...
We'll get to it next week.
It sounds like they've taken away the right for administrators to discipline people.
Yes.
Has that been taken away from them? That's what I don't understand.
Maybe we can add to the meeting. Yes.
Forgive me if I stutter. I really hate public speaking, it's not one of my things, but I really want to see an outcome. My daughter, who is six years old, and she's in the ASD program over at Houghton, I am concerned about, it seems like there's a high turnover rate, and it could just be me, of teachers, social workers, and parapros for the ASD department. My daughter, last year, lost a really good teacher, just after spring break. Honestly, I don't know who her special ed teacher was at the end of the year. Um, this year, she's been here two teachers already, countless aides, and she just lost a really good aide just before Christmas. Now we are starting back and having issues with her acting out, and I think it's because of the familiar faces of mine. And we are trying to keep a steady routine for her, steady bedtime, nothing has changed, only different faces. And I know some of them are leaving because other districts are giving higher pay, so maybe we can look into giving our teachers, especially our ASD teachers and our parapros a raise. They deal with meltdowns, they deal with bathroom problems, they deal with all sorts of stuff. As a parent, I deal with that home. And I am so thankful every day that they have those parapros at school to help her. But I really just, on behalf of them, I think they deserve much more money than they are being given. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to rest? Okay, with that, um, discussion items for future items for next meeting, we will take action on bid package 19 dash 02. And with that, we go to Superintendent Ford, Dr. Wunder.
Thank you. Regarding the ASD turnover, uh, if you write, it is a real thing, I have, this is my opinion, if you have a, we have a clean conversation after the meeting, um, but special ed teachers right now are at a real premium, and we are getting to offer something awful from other school districts, which brings up a topic that I had on my list to talk about anyway. There is a, a new group beginning here in Waterford to do a parent push, a community push for the School Finance Research Collaborative. Uh, you may have heard about it before, we've done a couple of presentations on it here last year, and, uh, this is a study that went out to take a look at, you know, how much money does it really cost to educate a child? No one's been able to answer that, and if you look at Oakland County, uh, we're able to do it for $7,800, and it takes $14,000 in Bloomfield Hills to do the same thing. So, uh, the, the study came up with a minimum amount of, uh, between around $95 to $9700, something right in there, almost $2,000 more funding per child than we get. And when you take a look, and that's without special ed costs and without transportation costs, and so when you take a look at the, the funding that we get, we are second from the bottom in funding in the state of Michigan here in Waterford. Uh, and the bottom, I think, is only about $11 away from us, something like that, $11 lower than us. So we're at the bottom of the funding total pool here in, uh, Waterford schools. And, and because of that, uh, we have not been able to offer the pay scale that we would like to be able to offer our employees at any level, whether it's teachers, or aides, or cooks, or bus drivers. So, uh, this, this new push, there's, you know, new people in Lansing right now, this is the time, and we really need your help. Uh, next week, on Wednesday, uh, January 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:00, at the Perry Administration Building, Room 105, is gonna be the first meeting of a, a parent group that's coming together to, uh, try to, try to change things. You know, I, I meet with legislators all the time, they're tired of hearing from school people. I think as parents, and the people who spoke tonight that were parents of kids in Waterford, that's powerful, it's powerful to hear from you, and, uh, I think that voice is gonna make a big difference in Lansing, and we could really use the, the help. So, uh, your perceptions are right, and I would love to be able to do something about that, and I would love to do your suggestions, um, and, uh, and we can all help to get that done, so that we can have the type of funding that will make that possible. Out of, out of all the topics this evening, I'm only going to deal with one, and I'll do it in a lighthearted way. I am happy to hear that we're looking at what Wild Lake and West Bloomfield do, because they also do School of Choice. West Bloomfield has about 35% School of Choice kids there. Uh, Wild Lake, you can't, I can't turn on my computer in the morning without getting an ad from Wild Lake about the School of Choice. Uh, both of these districts have also bolstered their, uh, their bottom line through School of Choice. Uh, basically, West Bloomfield has stayed in business as a result of, uh, School of Choice. Uh, I remember well, last year, we had, uh, some of our top kids who were the first ones that received the Advanced Achievement endorsement on their diplomas, uh, leaving the Waterford School District, and, uh, that same night, we happened to be talking about School of Choice, uh, voted it down, and one of the girls said, "I'm School of Choice." But our top kids in all of our high schools, School of Choice kids, so, uh, so I'm glad to hear that we're taking a look at what other school districts are doing. Uh, let me tell you about some other things going on, uh, in the district. Backyard Battle is Saturday. This is a huge event every year, uh, and this is competition in basketball for girls and three boys at five at OU in the arena. Um, of course, they're predicting the typical eight inches of snow that always happens on Backyard Battle. Uh, we intend to keep on plowing ahead, no pun intended, maybe pun intended on that. Um, if it gets worse than predicted, uh, we wanna make a call earlier in the day, so, you know, watch Twitter, watch Facebook, and watch most apps, whatever. Our plan is to, to have that competition, it's a great competition, and we've already rented the arena, so we wanna keep that. Um, you've already heard about noises off, Kevin PAC, I'll repeat the dates again, it's January 31st through February 3rd. And at Mott, uh, they're doing Monty Python's Spam Lot at the Mott PAC, February 1st through 10th. Uh, this was kind of a fun week for eighth graders. Eighth graders were able to visit our STEM lab, although one of them got iced out, uh, yesterday, so, uh, we will reschedule those groups to go visit the STEM lab, but always a cool experience for eighth graders to see what the possibilities could be for what kinds of things they can take, uh, at the, at the high school level. Uh, this week, uh, we, Mott's Abby Upledger, she was named Free Press Girls Basketball Player of the Week, so congratulations to her. Uh, we also had three third graders from Grayson Elementary earn leading awards from the Waterford Rotary and Metro North Federal Credit. Each month, they go to a different elementary and pick up, uh, teachers select students from, uh, third grade and Rotary and Metro North out of them. We had a very successful kindergarten roundup, uh, and orientation the, the other day, and the roundup at the building is February 7th at 6:00. I would urge anybody that, uh, has a four or five-year-old or knows a four or five-year-old to have them come to their home elementary school and get to see the building, get to see the classroom, hear more about what actually happened inside the individual building block. Uh, we did, uh, the kindergarten orientation I was talking about was actually on, uh, January the 8th, and we welcomed, we were not a pleasure, all sitting down, we welcomed the class of 2,032. Picture that on a varsity jacket, 32 on the sleeve of a varsity jacket, and that will not be all that far in the future. So, uh, amazing that we're talking that far, that far out. Uh, we also, last night, we had a celebration for Wired Robotics, uh, they had a great season, and last night was their culminating activity. And, um, you may have looked up at the board table here and said, um, gee, are they, do they get this many gifts every single meeting? And no, uh, they don't, but this is, uh, January, and January is recognized as Board Appreciation Month, and, uh, we want to appreciate all the time and effort that the board puts into, uh, serving the kids and community in Waterford. So, Happy Board Appreciation Month.
With that, we'll go to Board of Education reports, Mr. Harman.
I just am, I am excited. I want to welcome, uh, Julie to our board. Um, I think it's an exciting time for us, and I'm looking at, um, what, what I'm hoping for in the future. I will, just for people who may have time to think about, um, action items that, um, or information items that will be hopefully on the agenda next meeting, I'll be requesting. Um, I'd like us to have a discussion about stipends that we offer, um, and how they're, how they're decided and where they're funded from. Uh, those are questions that will come up. I think Mr. Dr. Wunderlich actually had to do a fact or fiction about rumors about stipends that went on, and, um, so I'd just like to have a, a discussion about that, um, set on the agenda. I'm also gonna ask for, um, a policy discussion about, um, our board policy about all positions coming in front of the board. I'd like to actually have a discussion as an act of the discussion, and then action on it, because we've never... stipends that went on, and so I'd just like to have a, a discussion about that, set on the agenda. I'm also going to ask for a policy discussion about, a board policy about all positions coming in front of the board. I'd like to actually have a discussion as an act, as a discussion item, and then action on it, because we've never voted on that. We've just done it in comments, and people referenced it, but we've never actually had a formal item on the agenda the next week, vote on it. In terms of the agenda, I was, looking at the other medians, it's, lots of districts do it lots of different ways, and I think there's always a good thing to look outside yourself and look and see what other people have come up with other ideas that are good to keep us doing what we're supposed to be doing as a board. And our central role as a board is academic achievement, physical responsibility, and safety and security of students. Those are our three principles, things that we do. We set policies to help make sure that those occur, and we are to watch physical things, we are to watch student, we are to watch our safety and security. So I would like to see at every meeting, something about each one of those presented or discussed. I, I think it's awful that we go for months and don't have anything academic to discuss. Like tonight, it was mentioned we didn't discuss any academic, nothing was on the agenda. So I think if we, if you look at other districts, they have it, like, every time. So I think if we get into a cycle like that. And to help organize that, I think we have, I would like to see, again, other districts have committees, subcommittees to help organize these types of things. Subcommittees for budget, subcommittees for academic, subcommittees for state, and we're to have the lane committee, but, so those types of things, I think, would help us get a strain of consistency between meetings. And let's see, I, I would also like to thank, these gifts are always so wonderful when you go home and you open them up and see the handouts for kids, from kids, from teachers, the phone calls, the texts that I get during this week are wonderful. So I thank everyone for doing that. I appreciate my, the people who will be texting me vehemently tonight, supporting, supporting me. It's interesting, when I walk out of this room, the different feeling that I get when, when the community members who can't attend the meetings express to keep it up and to do the right thing for the district. So I appreciate that very much, and this is a nice, wonderful bag of loot that we got.
Just School Finance Collaborative, Mr. Dr. Wonderlick touched on, it's a possible prime time in the districts, but it's also a very exciting time to visit this research collaborative findings. I've been following very closely Board Member Hall's and Board Member Sutherland, also last night at a forum that I was at. We're learning more about this, and like Dr. Wonderlick said, we're pushing to give the community a call. It's, it's us as the community and our kids that are being affected by it, and I think that it would be really important that we start being that squeaky wheel, and that's really what we're looking to do. What they recommend is nine thousand five hundred ninety to educate a student. We are vastly underfunded. That doesn't include transportation, doesn't include food service, doesn't include capital costs, and only includes a four-point-six percent pension rate to, to educate a preschooler. You know, fifty thousand dollars to educate a preschooler. So we, as a community, are going to get together, we're going to use our resources, we're going to use our authority as a collective group to start going to Lansing, to start pushing our legislators. We have a new legislature. We have a governor that is pro-education, that backs the School Finance Collaborative. So right now, what we want to do is we want to, we want to cash in those chips. You know, I, I worked on a lot of campaigns this past year, and all my people won. So now it's time for them to, to start looking at districts, hearing from school board members, hearing from the community to make sure that we have affordable funding. Dr. Wonderlick brought up the school of choice thing. I shared with them at my last one-on-one, I get flyers all the time from the Wald Lake School Districts. My youngest is starting kindergarten when they come a year, she's part of that class in twenty thirty-two. She's running around, she's at kindergarten roundup, and she's running around with that class of twenty thirty-two shirt on. But there are lots of kids that aren't going to go on to kindergarten here at Waterford Schools, and they're being coached from our district by West Bloomfield, by Wald Lake. And I'll congratulate those school districts for doing that, but we, as a district, have to get ahead of that. We have to start saying, well, we are open to taking students as well. We have a number of opportunities here. We have our, we have our STEM program, we have our Advanced Achievement Academy. We just sent last year a kid that got a full scholarship to Harvard and Stanford from one of our programs, Harvard and Stanford. He chose to go to Stanford, but, man, I believe, I saw a lot of good kids. So we have a tremendous amount of opportunity to share those resources with our students, I think is a fantastic thing. I was not at the last board meeting, which was in December, and I don't want to see this as true, because it was Mr. Penel's last meeting, and I just do want to recognize him tonight for his service to the community. Twenty-plus years, I believe twenty-eight years of service at Waterford School District. It's obvious I agree with him on a lot of things. I agree with him last year on numerous things. But it's hard to not recognize somebody who's put in so many years into this community. So I, I do want to recognize him, but I was not able to be here. It was not a choice, that it was the last thing that I could make it, so I'm sorry that I wasn't here, but I do want to recognize him for that. And I want to recognize our newest board member, Miss Johnson. It's obviously not an easy job, like, we get all these cool gifts, but it is a service to the community, and it's something that I always say, we can argue, we can debate, we can discuss, as long as we do it in an educated and simple way. It's, it's good, because one day our kids in our district are going to have to go out to the community, they're going to have to go out and, and deal with people that are going to disagree with them, and they have to be able to, be able to disagree with them in an passionate disagreement, and to do it in an educated way. There's nothing wrong with that. It's all part of the process. Thank you.
I would just like to thank all of the kids that made this. I was very nervous coming in here tonight and so distracted by all of them names on my car, so I guess running to quarter to nine was kind of worth it because I got to read all of these. I would like to thank everybody that voted for me. I will not let you down. For those of you that did not, I hope to earn your trust over the next six years. Some children in this district, they both are freshmen, they attend Waterford Mott, have no ill intentions, sitting in this seat. They just plan to do what's best for all of our kids.
First of all, I want to welcome you, Julie. We're so happy to have you here and look forward to serving with you over these many months and years to come. Also, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Peter, on being president. Congratulations, we're happy to have you leading our board here. As many of you heard tonight, we are, we are a divided board. It doesn't take away from any of us who, who care deeply about the district. I am personally struggling a great deal about how to be effective and how to represent the community, most especially students in this community. I've pulled a ton of literature from the National Association, School Board Association, as well as Michigan Association School Board. I've taken a ton of courses and pulled on all my old literature from those courses, trying to make sure that I'm clear about where we are and where we need to go and what our role is and what our role isn't. I would ask you, those that agree with us and those that don't agree with us or board members, I hope that you will stop me and have a conversation with me. If there's something that I can do better to represent you, or if you have thoughts or suggestions on how to not have what happened tonight happen ever again, I encourage you to please call me. I'll wait after the board meeting. Please, I will make myself available to you, I will meet you for coffee, I will do whatever it takes, because the governance of this board is in trouble, and we have to figure out a path forward. Our community deserves better, our schools deserve better, our leaders, our administrators, our staff members, our teachers, and every single person that works in this district deserves better. And I want to do anything that I can to make that happen. I'm, again, struggling. Beautiful gifts, the heartfelt notes that come, I, I will tell you, I feel woefully unworthy, and, but I will read them and enjoy them nonetheless. Just so folks know, if I was going to summarize, the role of a board member is, the National School Board Association suggests that the four major thrusts of leadership for school boards are vision, creating a shared vision, structure, establishing a structure that achieves this vision, accountability, developing accountability to measure and communicate how well this vision is accomplished, and advocacy, which is championing the vision. You saw none of that here tonight, none of it. No matter how you try, you can't squeeze anything that happened here tonight into one of those buckets, and that's not okay. Relative to advocacy and championing change, as Member Torres mentioned, Heather and I, and he attended the School Finance, we've spoken about the study many times. I have a lot of literature here, I have some business cards. I hope that if you're interested in helping us championing that charge, especially from a parent perspective, because as, as Dr. Wonderlick said, their voices are incredibly powerful. I've read several studies that actually says for one phone call from a parent, that equates to twenty-five standard emails that they might receive, and so it's very powerful to make that phone call, and in twenty-five emails, they assume represents, I think it's five hundred people. So when your legislators are thinking about it, that's kind of how they, in this study, that's kind of how they're quantifying it. So a phone call is the be-all, end-all, and multiple phone calls is very powerful. So I have information on that, we can certainly, we would love to have you help us participate in that, and anything that, any questions you might have, don't hesitate to, to meet me afterwards, and we can talk through that. I also just wanted to thank Grant for the work that you do on the Waterford Youth Assistance and for, and acknowledge the mentoring, because it is a very powerful thing, and we do recognize that we have many students who have families that are there to support them every single day and mentor them along the path, but we have a lot of families that struggle, and we have kids that maybe don't have that person in their life, and anything that we can do to, to help that, to help that child is something that we all want to do. So I appreciate the work that you do in the, in the youth assistance as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Again, I'd like to echo everybody's sentiments and welcome Julie to board, and I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight and sharing your opinions and thoughts with us, and I look forward to our board hopefully making some progress as we move forward.
Well, I wish I would have spoke first because I do not want to be the last one to speak. We'll figure that out. Again, same thing to Julie, welcome, first night on the board, and to Joan, congratulations on reelection and another six-year term. As Joan mentioned, it's Board Appreciation Month, and we have all kinds of gifts. I, too, feel really kind of shady in accepting them. I am not happy with the way the board meeting went tonight. I've known Grant Smith for two or three years. He is probably one of the nicest people, doesn't say a negative thing about anybody, and when Grant gets up and is frustrated, you know, it was a man, it wasn't good. I got to do a better job, my first meeting as president, and, and like he said, I, I got to use this more or, or something. So people know, I, I had already looked, I knew tonight might be a possibility, but I didn't want to sign up first. There is an all-day board president's workshop in Detroit in February that I plan on signing up for tomorrow to take, so hopefully I can do a better job. It's my goal, I, I had plenty of meetings with Dr. Wonderlick in the last few months, and I told him, you know, this is the right job for me because I could take and help bring this board together. I'm going to try, I, you know, tonight was, was rough, and it got out of hand a lot, but I know there's seven, nine good people up here that care very deeply about the schools. Some of you agree with some, some of you agree with the others. You know, I don't know, but I do know all of us are good people. We don't do this for the money to be on this board. As I said earlier, you know, if I didn't want to be here and get off work earlier, then, then I shouldn't, but, but I'm here and I, I plan to do the job. So all I can say is, we will, we will get there sooner than later, and it's my goal to bring us together. Do everything I can to do that. I will take these classes, I will do everything I can to pull us together. Like I said, everybody's a good person up here, and we can get there. So, anything else?